Right. Okay. Thank you for making it to city council meeting tonight, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you for everyone that's come to council chambers and like Mayor Laufson always said, the millions watching on TV. I don't ever think it's too many, but we probably have a few. It might be.
That made him really laugh, though.
Yeah, it was good. So, thanks for coming. We're gonna start tonight's meeting off with with our great leader of our food pantry in the community, Wendy Osborne of Tabitha's Way is gonna give us a spiritual thought and a prayer, and then we'll follow. Who's giving the pledge? Who's leading the pledge?
I'll do it.
Okay. Councilman Gordon will lead the pledge. Wendy?
Check out there.
Yes.
He just said prayer, so.
If we get a prayer out of you, that's plenty. Yeah, that's plenty. Thank you.
Granted, well, that's all I'm saying. Father God, as we come before you, Lord, we thank you, Lord, for this day. We thank you, Lord, for living breath and for all the blessings, Lord God, that you provide us. We're grateful for this community, for the work that you set before us, Lord God, and the opportunity to work with you. As we know, Lord God, that you establish all of our work, Lord God, and everything that our hands do. Father God, we pray for our community. We pray for our community leaders. We pray for them to receive just wisdom and understanding beyond their own, that they'll be able to continue to do the work that you set before them. Lord God, we pray that you'll watch over our first responders and our police officers as they deal with hard things, Lord God. We pray that you'll offer them favor, protection, and encouragement. And, Lord God, we pray for our youth. We pray, Lord God, that our youth will will know how much they're loved and that they will feel the need to to seek you out, Lord God. And just that, Lord God, we pray as a community that we have unity, that we are able to walk in peace. And again, Lord God, we we say thank you, Lord, and recognize you as the author of all things and and give you all the praise and glory, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, Wendy. Would the audience please rise and repeat the pledge after me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may proceed. Thank you. Thank you, Wendy and Jody, for being great pillars of our community. Okay, that'll lead us to the next agenda item, the Public Works Division of the Year, Fleet and Garbage Services. Someone taking care of that?
I know.
Okay. All right. We'll push that a little ways and watch for Chris's direction of when we can bring that back up. That'll take us to public comments. Is anybody here from the public that would like to address the mayor and council? Not for a specific item that's on the agenda, but just general public comment? Name, rank, and serial number.
Mayor and council members, my name is Doug Ford, and I'm here tonight representing the City Parks and Recreation Committee. And this is more addressed to you, Mayor, and, you know, prior to you becoming mayor, you served on the our Recreation Committee as a council member, and we just wanted to, you know, tell you thanks for the the service that you you had, and it was, you know, with your input and, you know, for the months that you did serve, we appreciate that. So, on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Committee, you know, it was a pleasure having you on that committee.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you.
However, there was some unfinished business I wanted to bring up. As you know, in whether it's the Parks and Recreation Committee meeting or a lot of the city meetings, you know, there is a policy that if your phone goes off, or if it makes a distraction like that one there, or or if you are late for a meeting, then you buy donuts for everybody on the next meeting. And we were reviewing the last minutes of our meeting, and it come up, it showed that you were sixteen minutes late for a meeting. And so.
That's early by his standards.
I know that, but it doesn't matter. But so what that means is, you know, just because you're the mayor, that doesn't mean you get off from buying donuts for our next meeting. So, we meet at the first Monday evening, five o'clock, same place, and it is, you know, it is the expectation of the committee that you would be there with donuts. And just, I don't know about the rest of the committee members, but I like the chocolate ones with the green chocolate filling inside.
You should be taking notes, Mayor. I got it. I don't wanna tell you how to do your job. We'll get a recorder. Just taking notes.
Anyway, so we'll look forward to seeing you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Doug, I thought you were gonna, like, name a park after it. Downhill.
Who's over Parks and Rec now?
Me.
Councilman Marshall?
Yeah.
You just piled on in the last meeting.
Well, I was three minutes late.
Oh, okay.
I'll be next month.
We can share the cost. Thank you, Doug, and all the Parks and Rec Committee, really, the the guys and girls from the community that have served years and years on that. Really, when you talk about the quality of life, and we all get emails and messages about how great Spanish Fork is with the quality of life and the parks we enjoy, a lot of credit goes to those volunteers that have been there for years and years and helped lay that out and and been so instrumental. So Doug is one of those, and I will, I will bring donuts next Monday. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else from the public that wants to address the council? Okay. That'll take us to council comments. Let's see. Did we not, we had B. that to, couldn't come, right?
She did not come.
Okay. Is there a follow-up to any previous public comments?
Second.
Okay. Thanks, Tyler. Sorry, before we get to council comments.
No problem. It sounds like you'll have an opportunity to follow up in the next council meeting about the comments in this meeting.
It's a follow-up. Yeah, I got it down.
Just wanted to follow up. Janet Pine, it was nice enough to take some time out of her busy schedule to come down and share her experience that she had with our EMS division and when she called for an ambulance. Just wanted to follow up with that. Captain Reed and I recently had an opportunity to meet with Janet and to address the concerns that she had shared at the February first meeting. Captain Christina Reed thoroughly reviewed the reports that were associated with Janet's EMS call and visited with the EMTs that were actually on the call. And it was a very, it was a very friendly meeting. We discussed some areas where we feel we can improve, and we explained some of the protocols that we that we're required to follow. And just wanted to let you know that we're we're grateful that Janet took the time to visit with us and help us try to continually improve. And so, any, any other questions about that?
Any questions from the council about that?
I appreciate that follow-up. Thank you, Tyler.
Yeah, yeah, no sorry.
We'll, we'll move to council comments now, and we'll start with Councilman Argyle on the end. Councilman Argyle, any council comments for tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple. So, I wanna thank, say first, say thanks to all the departments this last weekend. We spent our little retreat that we go for two days and do a huge information dump of what we've accomplished in the year and what our departments are looking forward to, their needs and their services as we continue into the next year. It takes a lot of work to prepare so that they can present to us, and it's a lot of information for us to take in all at once, so it takes a few days after that to to download and and go through the information of what our city's needs are for the next coming, coming year. And grateful for their time and effort and all of those that put that together and and help with that. Also, sorry, 'cause a couple of these are gonna get emotional, but yesterday I had the opportunity to go with Mayor and deliver some four thousand Valentines to our schools, and I'm sure we're gonna hear about that. What I didn't expect is Channel News and the radio stations and everybody else, and then we got some good comments from some high school students as we took a Valentine to them. Thanks for that opportunity, Mayor, for allowing me to go along with you and experience that. As we were leaving, the one comment was made that because of that Valentine, if it saved just one kid to change his mind and think of a positive thing rather than a negative thing and go forward with his life, it was worth those four thousand Valentines that we took out. Grateful for that, an opportunity to do that. Also today, Rotary meeting was today, had the opportunity to hear from a previous city manager that served in Spanish Fork, Dave Euler and his wife, recently went on an LDS mission to Guatemala, and we had an opportunity to hear about their experiences and also about Guatemala and the country and some of those services that they do, and the fact that they're still continuing to serve. When you look at some of these communities, and the one thing that Dave told us is the Guatemalan people are a happy people, but there are poor people, but they are happy. And you could see that in his videos. But to think that how blessed we are to be here and have the opportunity to maybe serve them, it was grateful for Dave and Susan to share their experiences with the Rotary Club and let us know that some of those communities in the world aren't as fortunate as us and give us an opportunity to maybe lift them just a little bit. I'm grateful for that opportunity to serve the Rotary. That was pretty much the whole thing with the Rotary today. Looking forward to their next business meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Argyle. Councilman Gordon?
Thank you, Mayor Mendenhall. That Valentine's opportunity was wonderful yesterday. I know that it was inspired to you by Sterling Brinkerhoff, Spanish Fork High student a few years ago that gave out a Valentine to every, every kid in the high school, and so Mayor Mendenhall, you know, along with a local business owner who donated some funds and said, hey, this is, this would be a great idea. It was great to be a part of that, and so just appreciate all your efforts putting that together, Mayor. Being up in Midway, like, like Councilman Argyle mentioned, we meet before this meeting every, every council meeting for roughly forty-five minutes to an hour and discuss usually a work session item. The two days we spent Friday and Saturday was the equivalent of one year of all of those meetings, so twenty-two, twenty-two of those meetings, if you will, almost twenty-two hours of of just rigorous meeting and discussion and and dialogue, working over the budget, making sure that we're being, we're being wise with the funds that we have to deal with. So, appreciate all of the prep, preparation on behalf of all the directors, and it was a great, it was a great work session. Sat in a meeting with Councilwoman Beck, reviewing our Dowdell puzzle, and we're excited for that, looking forward to the release of that prior to our Fiesta Days, so it'll be done before July, and and we're excited for that. At one point, Mayor Tyler Jacobson was in between Councilwoman Beck and I, and we were having some discussions, and the Dowdell people were like, do they, do they not like each other? But it was a great, it was a great experience for them to realize, like, we, no, that's how we debate and discuss and, right?
Yeah, we were fighting over if Ashibaba wears his shirt in the puzzle or if he should have it off. Big, we make big decisions here in Spanish Fork.
I won, I won, just to be clear.
He wanted the shirt off. Go figure.
Got the proof today, and he's not wearing a shirt. So I won. Mayor, we also had an opportunity, you were there, to attend a town hall with Lieutenant Governor Deidra Henderson. We're lucky to have her live in our great town of Spanish Fork, and she had an event last Thursday at the River Bridge Event Center, and most of the discussion, most of the questions were directed toward voter confidence and our election process and making sure that that is a trusted process, and her being the oversight of that, she answered all of the questions that she could, and it was a great event, so appreciated being able to attend that. Most importantly, we had a special meeting with the Solid Waste District, and I shared with Nick some of the slides from that meeting last week where we approved the guaranteed maximum price. If you'll scroll down to slide right there, the total cost of the transfer station is the forty-five million, three hundred and twenty-three dollars, three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, excuse me. The guaranteed maximum price you're looking at there is the thirty-three million that we'll be looking at, and so essentially, we've, we've roughly put twelve million dollar down payment on the project. Just wanted to share those numbers with you. Hughes is ready to mobilize March first. We've, we've known that we've been doing some of the onsite civil work and things of that nature in conjunction with some of the other projects that are being developed out in that area near the airport. So, it was very exciting. I think I got on the, I call it the garbage, the garbage district, like, seven, six or seven years ago, maybe eight years ago, and we started talking about this. So, to finally have that special board meeting on February ninth and get that approved, I just wanted to share that with you. That's great news, so. That's all I have, Mayor.
Some good work. You ever been late to that meeting, or do you show up on time?
Not once.
And four-one, Councilman Gordon's been great on that, on that committee and bringing to fruition a needed big asset.
Mayor, if I may, I think it's worth highlighting what you are not doing with this project in terms of rates and different things, the impact that that it's having.
Yeah, thanks, Seth. In correlation with this, you would think, oh, my heavens, that's a big project. We will see a rate increase on your garbage per ton of twenty-five cents in two thousand and twenty-six and another twenty-five cents in two thousand and thirty. So essentially, your rates will stay the same until that time, and we're able to fund this project with the sale of the existing Springville land as well as just sort of save, part of, part of the New Era cell of our, part of our landfill. We let other groups join into us, and we got that project put together. It's called New Era, and so those, those things are kind of the two highlights that help us to why we keep those rates the same. It's good. Thank you for pointing that out.
And this just isn't us borrowing, this number is Spanish Fork City, but our neighboring cities?
Provo, Springville, Salem, Mapleton, Woodland Hills, and Goshen. Goshen just goes directly to the Bayview landfill, but they don't bring stuff to our transfer station. They are a member of our group.
Thank you. Councilwoman Beck?
Good job, Councilman Gordon. I think my only difference from you guys is I bring visual aids, so I take pictures. So, the first one is about two weeks ago was the Chamber of Commerce Annual Awards Gala, and that was held at the Shaloon, and there's just a couple of us there. We're meeting new board, board members, people volunteering their time, lots of awards given out to different businesses and individuals throughout the community that never expect recognition but are so deserving. So, thank you to the Chamber of Commerce, where there's so many of you here today. So, thank you for all the time and energy and and effort put into that. Next, Mayor Mendenhall put me on the League's Policy Committee, and so I was up at the Capitol and have been on some Zoom meetings, and, and we're talking about land use, public safety, economic development, and just keeping tabs on what's going on up at the Capitol right now during session to see what we can do to make a difference, because a lot of their decisions, if not all of their decisions, trickle down and make a big impact on our life. And then, just to echo what Councilman Gordon said about the town hall meeting last week at River Bridge Event Center with Lieutenant Governor Deidra Henderson, we talked about, she talked about voting, signature verification, following your ballot, voter trust, so a lot about voting. So that was really information, informational, and she talked a little bit about the new flag that they're working on and that you can, there's a website, you can just go to, I think it's Follow, I can't, Follow the Flag Utah.gov, and, and see their updates and the people submitting drawings and artwork for that. So, that's all I have.
You're not gonna tell the public about the biggest infraction in vote, in mail-in ballots that she mentioned?
Oh, my gosh. Yes, this is a good one. The biggest infraction is signature verification, and it's when the missionaries are serving missionaries, their mothers are forging their names.
Don't do it.
Don't do it. They, they really don't like that. So, that was good.
It's a misdemeanor.
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 It's bad.
Yep.
Councilman Marshall?
Thanks, Mayor. I don't have any pictures, so I brought Doug and for comic relief. I appreciate that. Parks and Rec did meet this last, last week. They made a couple of unanimous recommendations for us to know about. They unanimously recommend that we build a rec center and not just a pool. Full support for that. And they chose a location of their, that they recommend, and that is at the sports park. So those are the two things they, they worked with, worked on. We talked about various, the various projects throughout the city. I think some of those are, are in our budget that we're gonna approve today, so, or we're gonna discuss today. The airport board was canceled, so we didn't meet. The retreat last week, I'm still, like, trying to fight my way through the amount of information that we were given. It was a good weekend. I appreciate all the director's time and efforts in answering all the questions that I could throw at them that day. I'm sure at some point they will tell me to stop, but I will not, so just get used to it. But it was a great time, and the, the Valentine stuff I missed yesterday, but I did get the chance to help put them together on that, that Saturday, that Friday night. My fingers are still, I still don't have my fingerprints on a couple of them from the glue, but I was very honored to, to help, Mike. That was a great idea, and it was very impressive, so congratulations there. That's all I have.
Oh, there you are.
You don't need to bring one in.
I don't need to buy it.
It was late at night.
I was dressed up as usual.
Yeah. That's a great picture. Hey, thank you. Councilman Euler?
Just wanna echo comments on city staff, appreciate the efforts that were put into your presentations and the things that we were trained and taught over the weekend. Much appreciated. I've got a few things to go over. First, I'm gonna start with the Chamber of Commerce. We've got Jesse Carden tonight representing the chamber. I'm gonna give him some time to discuss some chamber things.
Thank you, Councilman Euler. Just a couple of things that are on our docket that are coming up. Thursday, we have our new networking lunch at the Veterans Memorial, so by the fire station here on Main Street. At noon on Thursday, we had our awards gala that Councilmember Beck talked about, and then we are still searching for a new president and CEO, and I will probably be up here every council member meeting talking about it until we find somebody, so if you wanna help us, you'll get me out of here. And then, other thing that we, we just wanted to express as a, as a chamber is thank you for the support of the city, whether that's attending meetings or, you know, giving us support through, through this avenue, being at our events, just thank you for your support as a city. That's all I got. Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Jesse. Next, we're gonna talk a little bit about the senior center. I love being on the senior, senior board and being able to participate with them. We've got a few pictures that I've asked Nick to share. These were taken by our own Pete Hanson. These were taken by our own Pete Hanson. SF-17 was able to go Friday night and snap some photos, and he also did a video that was put together that they put on the SF-17 channel.
You get to go to this?
I do get to go. I didn't, because I was at the same thing, putting treats together on Valentine's Day. So no, I was not able to go to this.
We missed donuts from the mayor.
But I will say this, I will emphasize that if you're of senior age and you're not participating in the Senior Citizen Program, you are missing out. They have some great mills. I want to share just a few. The picture that's on the screen now is Ned and Angel Jolly from Salem. They were this year's sweetheart couple. So I want to congratulate them. I think I heard they've been married right around forty years, so pretty cool for them. Currently, they have about two hundred and twenty total members that are attending the Senior Center. Since September twenty twenty-one, that's grown by eighty, so they're currently at two-twenty. Within the last six-plus months, they've increased membership by fifty-seven percent, and that's pretty impressive, pretty amazing. Mills are every Mondays and Thursdays at noon. If you don't know where the Senior Center is, it's on Center Street and about Second West, right on the corner. They cook, I asked, I said, "About how many mills are you making each mill?", and they said a hundred and sixty on average. So they are feeding, on average, a hundred and sixty seniors every Monday and every Thursday, which is amazing.
Kevin, can I ask a question on that? Do people need RSVP, or can they just show up?
It's best that they RSVP. Thank you for bringing that up, so they know how many to plan for. One way that you can do that and get information is go to the city's website. If you go to SpanishFork.org, click on Departments, and then go to the Parks and Recreation section, you'll notice the Senior Center link on the left. That'll give you all the information that you would like to know about the Senior Center. Next item, yesterday, attended my first Mountain Evo Water Agency meeting, and some of the agenda items that they covered, first was they're working on a groundwater management plan, which will give us better data to track and understand where our groundwater and our well water is at. This image right here is our snowpack as of yesterday. This black line is this year, twenty twenty-two. And you can see, we started the year off great. We had an awesome storm there in December, and then January came and something happened, and it's just been awful. Look at that straight line. We've not had any snow or rain for nearly two months now. So we're hoping to see a bump. The green line that you see right here is our twenty-year average. So we started off again great, we were above average, then it's just flatlined, and now we're back below average. You can see, we're not to where, the green one here is twenty twenty-one, so this was last year. So we're still above where we were a year ago, but lots and lots of room for improvement with snow and rain. So let's keep our fingers crossed that we have a very wet spring and that we still see snowstorms. That's not all bad news. Let me show you this next image that we've got. This is last year, the groundwater at eight or nine, eight inches. So they go and they measure how much water is there in the ground at eight inches. So in twenty twenty-one, you can see our area, we were at fifty-five percent groundwater, which, you know, we know how last year was. It was an awful year for water. Reservoirs dried up, farmers were struggling with irrigation and whatnot. If we look at the next image, this is where we were one year later at the same time. So our groundwater is looking good. It's because of that huge snowpack that we received in December, those storms, and so we are definitely better off than we were a year ago, but we're not out of the, you know, a lot of room for improvement. Water, another thing that talked about in our meeting yesterday were all of the legislative updates that are centered around water. Quite a few bills in the House and Senate this year concerning water. If you've seen the news, you've seen, you know, Salt Lake, the Great Salt Lake, and the concerns that they have there and what they're trying to do there. One of the other things they discussed yesterday was what is called the Utah Lake Restoration Group. Maybe some of you have seen in the news, this is a group that's wanting to try and clean up Utah Lake, put some islands on the lake and do some development there. That currently is in front of the Army Corps of Engineers. They've submitted an application. The Army Corps is analyzing and looking at that, and it could take up to a year or two, they say, before the Army Corps makes a decision on that. If the decision is in favor, next steps would be to start dredging the lake, and that could take upwards of fifteen years to get the lake dredged. So in all reality, if this plan were to move forward, which we're not saying it will, I don't think a full decision's been made yet, but if it were to move forward, you wouldn't see islands on the lake until at least fifteen to twenty years from now. So that was interesting. And then, yeah, again, the snow report. So keep our fingers crossed that the storm that we get next week, they're saying tomorrow's probably won't be too heavy, but we're hoping that next week's storm will be pretty big. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Euler. Seth, do you want to take just a second about some of the water news that's in the state this year, and highlight again where Spanish Fork is, decisions that are maybe being mandated to cities now, but the decision of Spanish Fork City over twenty years ago?
Yeah, thank you. And Chris, if I miss one, if you'll whisper in my ear or shout, there's a lot of discussion about being water-wise, water-conscious, and specifically metering, and metering our secondary water. So many of the residents here, if you've lived in Spanish Fork since, say, two thousand and two, you might recall that at that time, Spanish Fork City put in a pressurized irrigation system throughout all of the city. And that secondary water, when we put it in at that time, we decided to put meters on that system, which frankly was a very unpopular decision and was unique. Other cities had put in pressurized systems, and other cities since then have put in pressurized systems and didn't meter. And none of those cities were able to realize any kind of significant water savings in how that water is used. But Spanish Fork since two thousand and two has seen a relative per capita decrease of roughly twenty-five percent, I want to say, which meets the governor's goals set back many, many years ago. We've already met the governor's goals in terms of our per capita use. We already have, therefore, the habits of water conservation. And so there's a bill that will mandate that all cities, that would mandate all cities put in meters on their secondary system. That will cost residents of those respective cities a lot of money to dig up right around their meter can, install a setter base, and then put a meter on that. Unfortunately for them, they would be doing that in twenty twenty-five dollars, where we did it with two thousand and two dollars. And what I mean by that is the cost back then was maybe a million dollars for that, and if we were to do that project today with this town the size that we were back then, it'd probably be close to ten.
Sixty-five.
Or sixty-five.
Sixty-five million?
Yeah, that's what he said. We're spitballing at this point, right? But who cares? A big number difference, right? I mean, that's a big, big difference. And so we're a lot better off in terms of water conservation and being ahead of the curve on that one. That's probably the big one I'm thinking of. Is there one other one you're thinking of?
No, just whenever we talk about water, like Councilman Euler is pointing out to us and go into those meetings, which are super important for us to go to and be represented at, you're going to hear a lot of irrigation and water in the state of Utah and in the news from this legislation passing the state, but it's good for residents to know. I'll bet we have just as green of grass and beautiful of landscapes in Spanish Fork, and we're already saving the water that the governor is asking us to do, so.
Yeah, last year, and let's assume we're going to have another drought unless we see that graph change, which we all hope it does. December was fantastic, wasn't it, in terms of all the snow that came? But let's assume it doesn't change, and we have another year like last year where throughout the state you'll see a lot of talk of restrictions and the like. Spanish Fork didn't put any restrictions on our water use in our homes last year, and we don't foresee us putting any restrictions on this year. However, we did encourage residents to participate in the effort to conserve additional water, and it was pretty fascinating. By not putting restrictions on and already having low use, our residents chose to conserve a little bit more water. We saved two hundred and sixty-five million gallons of water last year. Interestingly, we grow at about two or three thousand new residents a year in our town, and our water use last year was equal to or right around our water use, I want to say it was twenty eighteen, as if we were some six to eight thousand residents fewer. And that was just by you and me saying, "We're all in this together." And that really was the effort that we put into this, that we, we're not on an island. We've done so many things here to prepare for times like this as a community, and we have a great water system and we have great water resources, but we're not alone. And so every drop that we save might be helpful for somebody else, and so we all pulled in together, and it's a pretty good year. And hopefully, we don't have the same constraints as last year, but if we do, we'll reach out to our residents again and ask them to participate one more time voluntarily, and we find that it does end up saving, and we don't have to be punitive, we don't have to be mandating and anything like that. So we'll probably look forward to something like that if we don't have water come down from the sky again.
Yeah. Good work. Thank you, residents. Good work participating and conserving water in a desert. And thanks, Councilman Euler, for your leadership in those committees. Okay, my comments real quick. I had met some friends at the Lieutenant Governor's meeting that she had last week that Councilwoman Beck showed pictures of, and they have some good news to share with us here in Spanish Fork. So I'd invite them up and introduce themselves, and let us know what you're up to.
I'm Stephanie Ashcraft. I'm on the Utah County Communication Council of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and we wanted to invite Wendy Osborne to come up from Tabitha's Way. Many of you are familiar with the Giving Machines Initiative. That's done, and there were ten locations across the United States this year. One of them was in Orem. We had two global charities that were featured in the machines, and then we had four local charities that were in there. And this year, we were so excited, Tabitha's Way was selected as one of the charities to be featured in the machines. And we just wanted to share what was donated by the people in Utah County to go towards their organization. So they had five items they could put in the machine, and one of them was a month of meat and dairy, and we had five hundred and seventy people purchase that for Tabitha's Way. The next one was Feed a Veteran for Six Months. We had seven hundred and fifty-two people purchase that for Tabitha's Way to donate to people in need in our community. The next one was personal care items. So that included toilet paper, soap, shampoo, toothpaste, and other essential items for a family, and nine hundred and ninety-four people purchased that for Tabitha's Way to distribute to the people in the community.
We need a bigger storage unit.
And then, this one was a popular one, too. It was one month of fresh produce, and we had one thousand seven hundred and fifteen people purchase this for Tabitha's Way to donate, to distribute to people in need in the community. And then the last item, which this one was one of the favorites in the machines, it was backpack and school supplies, and this one, four thousand seven hundred and seventy-two people donated for that. And the total amount donated by people here in Utah County to benefit Tabitha's Way, and I'm getting teary-eyed just because this is so good. It was a hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars is going, and it was just direct deposited into their account. But that's a kind of a commemorative gift certificate, so she can remember how much the full amount was, and yeah. So we just want to say how much we appreciate the work that Wendy and her crew does here in Utah County. They have two locations, one in American Fork and one here in Spanish Fork, and they do so much good taking care of those in need in our community, and we couldn't, I mean, there's such an essential part of what happens here to bless the lives of so many. So we just want to thank Wendy for all the good things that she does.
Thank you.
And we do want to say, we left you each a Light the World with Love mug for each of you, so that you can remember to be a part of it.
Stephanie, thank you so much. Stand up here, Ross. Yeah, speech, Wendy, let's hear it.
I just want to say thank you also to you, Stephanie, and to everyone who made this whole project come together. It was our first year to be honored to participate in this program, and I was astonished, because this came from just one location in Utah County. And just, I mean, this is enough backpacks for our backpack program next year already. We're like, this year, we're like, yay, it's already, yes, we've got it. So we were just amazed by the generosity of our community and just overwhelmed by it. And I'm very honored to get to do this work, and I know that this isn't something that I do or that we do alone. We do it with this community. And I'm so grateful for the community that we live in and for everyone in this county that has contributed to help, to help make this whole dream come to fruition. I'm just so honored to be a part of it, and just so grateful for this. This is so meaningful to us. You know, one of the things is that we've struggled with is last year, of course, with not so much water, our local farmers didn't have much produce as a whole in general. Trying to get fresh foods for our pantry has been a challenge. We've been purchasing a lot of produce, and this is going to help us purchase those fresh foods that have the nutrients that our clients need, these families need. And whereas children are more than, well, fifty percent of those we serve, this is milk and eggs and cheese and produce for kids. And so I just want to say thank you, and again, to say how honored I am to be part of this, and this is just an overwhelming amount of generosity that speaks to the place we live in. So I want to say thank you, and God bless you, all of you.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Wendy.
Grab them up, too. Grab them up, too.
You can't top that.
Yeah, no, that's always a tough one when somebody comes up and says that they're going to get emotional, and then they get emotional for very good reason. So thank you, Stephanie. What a great gesture, and we've all had an opportunity. Wendy's invited us into her pantry as often as we want, really, to come help, and I know it's been such a cool experience for all of us to be involved with that and see the miracles that really you perform on a weekly basis there. So thank you. Next, I just had a couple notes about, a few of us have been involved these last couple of weeks with interviews for a new fire chief here in Spanish Fork. Just want to say that from the perspective of the residents, you should feel very honored that there's good people that want to apply and work in your city for such important jobs, both in our Public Safety Department that Chief Johnson leads, and now in our Fire and EMS side. So we're super excited about the progress of that as a council, and we're very proud of the history that we have there as well. So you'll see some new information come out in the coming months about that, but super excited for the talent pool that we have to choose from there, and thank everybody for applying. Public Power meetings I have tomorrow up at the Capitol with our Public Works, our Power and Light Director Jake Tyer and I will be there at early in the morning to speak on behalf of Public Power. Public Power is basically that you, the residents, the citizens, us, the Great questions, great insight, and it was drinking like from a fire hose for a little while, but, but it was great information to go over. We have a great future ahead of us. If I was to say, Seth changed it up a little bit this year and gave us a state of the department, of every department, that kind of culminated in a state of the city. And if there's one thing I can take away from it, I can tell you the state of your city is strong. It's secure. It's, it is, it is moving forward. It truly is the home of pride and progress. So excited to see what comes down the pike this year with our city, but we are in a great spot. You should know that as, as residents. It's been mentioned, too, Valentine's yesterday was, was a really special day. I, I gave, sent Nick a video to maybe watch and then, and then have a couple of comments after it. But thanks to Pete Hanson, Travis Bourne, and the whole crew of SFCN that put this all together, followed us all around yesterday morning to get this done. But this kind of sums it all up, yesterday.
Hi, everybody. Mayor Mike Mendenhall with Councilwoman Beck and Councilman Argyle. And Councilman Gordon joined us earlier. We are up here at Maple Mountain High School. We just got done delivering Valentines here at Maple Mountain. And before that, we were at Landmark, ALA, and Spanish Fork High School. So all together, 4,000 Valentines delivered to make sure every high school student in our community knows that they're loved today and every day, but especially on the day that we celebrate love.
That's great. Thank you so much. Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you.
For all you do.
Of course, of course.
Well, I love that Mayor Mendenhall had this idea actually from a former high school student about four years ago. So that made it special that I think high school kids, elementary kids, anyone can influence anyone in our community, great or small. And so thank you for all of the students sharing their smiles with us today as we've been out delivering Valentines.
Happy Valentine's Day. See you later. Happy Valentine's Day. See you later. Thanks, Rachel.
Do I get to? That Sprite in there with my cup and the Hershey's Kisses? Thank you. That's so nice. I'll keep this, I'll keep this at the mayor's office. Is that all right? Anytime I need a drink, and I just cracked that, I'll have a drink right in the mayor's office.
What we got here? Some Valentines from Mayor Mendenhall, huh? Are we going to Mendenhammy? You got something good there?
Thank you, sir. A Happy Valentine's Day from the mayor and city council. There's a QR code at the bottom that has a little message that even shows that we were all once high school students, too. Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. We want you to...
I'm just tickled to be a part of this. I think it's so awesome. I just want to think back when they put our pictures of when we was in high school. So it brings back a few of the memories when we were there. Times weren't always great, so hopefully, this will brighten their day and make their day a little better.
You've seen it in the news recently, and it seems like we see it all too often. You know, someone's bullied, or someone doesn't feel loved, especially in a, in an age that, you know, we're trying to figure it out. And so we were all high school students once as well, and so we wanted to get that message across to all the students today at Landmark, at ALA, at Spanish Fork, and Maple Mountain, that you are loved. You're loved. You're so important to us as a mayor and council, but you're super important to the whole community. So Happy Valentine's Day, students of Spanish Fork City. Happy Valentine's Day. On the day of celebrating love, we want you to know how important you are to us. We love you.
As hard as it is to believe, we were once in high school, too, and we understand the challenges you face every day.
We played, we failed, we learned, we succeeded. Everything in life takes effort. Don't give up.
We had friends, but sometimes it felt like we didn't have anybody. Your new best friend could be just a hello away.
We are proud of who you are, and while your future may be unknown today, we are sure you will accomplish spectacular things.
On this day, we want you to know that regardless of who you are or who you are not, you are loved and important to our community.
Happy Valentine's Day from the mayor and city council. We want you to know that on this day and every day, you are loved. Pass it on.
Thank you, Nick, for doing that. Nick, I sent, I sent him a picture of my friend that ran out of his classroom and gave me a Valentine. Colton Baraklov gave me, gave me my own Valentine that sits on the mayor's desk with, with a mug there, and that was a great gesture for him to come out. And one, before we left, he said, "Now, wait, you're the mayor?" And I said, "Yeah." And I thought he would, you know, I thought it was going to be something we couldn't put on camera, but he says, "Holy Shaheena." I guess he says that a lot at school when he's surprised by something, but that's what Colton said to me, and it was great to meet, meet a new friend. And a lot of friends, a lot of smiles. You can, you can Google that. The news covered it a little bit in the state, and it was, it was really neat to see. I think, again, thanks to the council and your spouses for, for all the help to get that together. It really is a, a team effort, like we do so many things in Spanish Fork. It takes a, it takes a team, and that was truly a, a team effort. Councilman Argyle ends that video with saying, you know, regardless of who you are or who you are not, in our children's lives, that's the message that, that I think we wanted to get across, especially in this day and age, and that we're once in your, in your shoes. And so, so a great message. I'll just share you, there's some, I'm sure all of us have received messages and, and texts and whatnot, and I'll protect this person's identity, but this was a text sent to my wife Amber later that night. And I'll get through it. It says, "Wow, what an inspiration. This had me in tears. Working at the hospital, my heart breaks as I learn of the many kids in high school that come into the ER in suicide crisis, trying to find some sense of belonging, to know they are not only known, but important and loved. This selfless act of kindness, I guarantee, has changed the course of so many lives. Thank you to the city. Thank you, Spanish Fork, for being so awesome and truly caring about your neighbor." So I think the message was received to, to not only the kids, but hopefully, families in Spanish Fork City, that you're loved, we care about you, and it's on a, on a good day to just remind us all that, that you're loved regardless of who you are. So thank you again, council, for doing that and putting it all together. I appreciate it. Okay. Is that enough emotional stuff for the one council meeting?
Now they're going to start yelling at us in the next phase.
Okay, all right, that's all right. We're ready now. Softened up. All right, council comments, with those being completed, we'll move to consent items. Item number six, consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Gordon and seconded by Councilman Argyle to approve the consent items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Okay, on to our first public hearing. We have quite a few public hearings tonight. It goes all the way from A down to I. Just as a reminder, we'll do this up front as Dave presents these public hearings, especially for zone changes and having to do with land use. Nick will, will get three minutes on the, on the clock for all these proposals. So when we go into public comment, this, or public hearing, excuse me, for, for these different items, just to remind you that that three minutes is, is there for you and for us. I'll give the applicant, obviously, a little bit more time, who's, who's put a proposal together to, to give to us, the council, for the first time. So just a reminder there, but we'll go to the first one here, Dave. Item A.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, thank you. The proposal here is to change the zoning from rural residential to R3 for this property, which is located on the south side of First South, just a little bit west of the Justice Center. It's a 7.2, give or take, acre parcel. And, you know, really relative to the future land use, I think there's any question about whether it should develop residentially or not. The only question that has been discussed has to do with how many homes should be constructed on the property. In short, staff and the Planning Commission have both recommended that the proposed change to R3 be denied. And that's based on a handful of different findings that we've made. First of all, we don't believe the proposed R3 zone is consistent with the general plan. Indeed, it's not. It's also not consistent with how surrounding properties have developed in either the R112 or the R19 zone. And with that being said, our recommendation tonight, again, is to deny the proposed change to R3. And with that, we would love, if you're inclined to, to make such a motion and to move in that direction, to provide some insight as to what zoning district you may be comfortable with assigning to the property. And with that, we would like to continue to work with this applicant to bring back a zone change with a preliminary plat at some point in the future. Now, having gleaned some insight from the Planning Commission, I believe we'll do that as well with you tonight, so that hopefully, that process is such that the applicant only needs to invest in one iteration of a very expensive submittal in the form of a preliminary plat, and so that hopefully, the process of ultimately getting to the point where this property can be developed goes somewhat smooth. That is really everything that I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to Dave before we, we hear from the applicant?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Would like to hear from the applicant before we move into public, public hearing, and then, and then we'll go into public hearing after that.
Do you want to put up the site, please? I thought they should have had it up there when they were talking. It's, yes.
Is this one right here?
Yeah, 34.
For all those millions at, at home, what state...
My name is Vic D'Vano, and I represent myself and partners, and also my developer, builder guys that we've been here 30 years with, and I have Gordy Jones here from Edge Homes, and Jed, also land development, and a few other people. Sheldon Gordon's here, aware of, as long as I've been around here, except my, my grandfather was here in 1854, so I feel invested. And so the history of this is real quick. They didn't want any townhomes. And so we did, every single family home, we switched to the, where the road is, and we put a smaller home in. We actually have, when it's measured out, it's actually 7.56 acres. And not 7.2, it's 7.5 when you read it out. We've been, have crops here, we've been doing sheep, we've had goats, we've grown corn. I had Spanish Fork City about 10, 12 years ago come down, and we did pumpkins, and the pumpkins were so plentiful, you know, everybody could get a free jumbo. We only did jumbos. And Arizona came with eight 40-footers and took all, and what was left over, we gave back to the Spanish Fork residents. I've always been a person who has given back, and I've done things that people have asked me to. And I'm proud of what we've accomplished in this city and for the developments we've done. The, one of the oldest ones was Spanish Trails, and if you drive through there today, you would see a great planned development that's 2025, some 27 years old, that still look good today. And we think that's great. We cooperated with the city, just so, we always cooperate with the city. They were having a problem running the river bottom trunk of sewer and water, and a few of our people to the west, Salisbury, didn't want to have it run through them. And so I talked to Dave Boyler, and I talked to Junior Baker, and Richard, Richard Heaps, and we all met, and I said, "Let's run them through." And so we ran that through Spanish Trails. And always cooperating, didn't charge a penny. You know, they paid for it, but we didn't charge a penny to run anything through, and they could have had the ride away anyway. So, so I wanted to come back on this piece, and I talked to Chris, just to talk about roadways. Chris made a suggestion that maybe if you take a look, okay, take a look here, this is 100 South, just so you're familiar. This is 100 South. Over here, you know, we have the homes with fieldstone, and I believe, Mayor, didn't you live in the fieldstone homes?
Yep.
And so fieldstone come right here. And so what we've done is we put in larger lots, all on this side where arrive is, and that's what we've done. We, we came down off 48 in the townhomes to 34 single-family lots. Now, why do we talk about 50 to 60 acre, 50 to 60 frontages? Because we have a 25-year history in Spanish Trails and what's gone in Spanish Trails to show that it works. And we're, you know, we think that the same thing will be here. And so we've got these lots and these lots, these are a little more than these lots, and we've got these here. And I feel that the 34, and you take the 7.5, 7.7, 7.2, whatever you look at, at four units an acre, we're at 28. We would be at, you know, 34, and we would probably only be about two houses short of, you know, density, what would be the density of four units per acre plus or whatever. So we are only asking a variable, a variable in it. We would sign a contract, because I'm used to signing contracts with the city over the years, and this is exactly what we do. And I want to make this very clear, this is, as Dave and I talked, this will be an Edge Home subdivision. So I think that with what we've done in Salt Lake and County, and Utah County, Edge is one of the premier builders now, and we do premier product and finishes and everything else in that. So I'm very proud of Gordy and his group that started here in Spanish Fork years ago and have migrated and went and got his construction degree and has probably the largest developer maybe in the state of Utah, but doing quality. So I'm not asking much. If you take that, I would like, can you put up that last one? I want to show you those 13 homes here, and I want to show you in the same space from here to here. Would you put up that, just the land piece you showed before without anything in it? Thank you. So I want you to count, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12. So you've got 12 homes in here. If you take and turn this around, there's only about 50 feet difference from here to there, and we are abrupt of fieldstone. I have nothing against fieldstone. They didn't hold fieldstone to the same requirement that we did at Spanish Trails, which is on 400 West. This used to be 800 West. Now it's 11. Was 798, actually, and then you guys changed addresses. And so Spanish Trails, just being straight up this at 400 West and 100 South, we here came into what you've got right here, and with the other spaces they have with the road, I think that we, we did something here that's comparable, that's in the area. You've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 homes right here. We're talking about from here to there, 13 homes. And I can... We came down off 48 in the townhomes to 34 single-family lots. Now, why do we talk about 50 to 60 acre, 50 to 60 frontages? Because we have a 25-year history in Spanish Trails, and what's gone in Spanish Trails to show that it works. And we're, you know, we think that the same thing will be here. And so, we've got these lots and these lots, these are a little more than these lots, and we've got these here. And I feel that the 34, and you take the 7.5, 7.7, 7.2, whatever you look at, at four units an acre, we're at 28. We would be at, you know, 34, and we would probably only be about two houses short of, you know, density, what would be the density of four units per acre plus or whatever. So we are only asking a variable in it, we would sign a contract, because I'm used to signing contracts with the city over the years, and this is exactly what we do. And I want to make this very clear, this is, as Dave and I talked, this will be an Edge Home subdivision. So I think that with what we've done in Salt Lake and County, and Utah County, Edge is one of the premier builders now. And we do premier product and finishes and everything else in that. So I'm very proud of Gordy and his group that started here in Spanish Fork years ago, and have migrated and went and got his construction degree, and has probably the largest developer maybe in the state of Utah, but doing quality. So I'm not asking much. If you take that, I would like, can you put up that last one? I want to show you those 13 homes here, and I want to show you in the same space from here to here. Would you put up that, just the land piece you showed before without anything in it? Thank you. So I want you to count, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12. So you've got 12 homes in here. If you take and turn this around, there's only about 50 feet difference from here to there, and we are abrupt of Fieldstone. I have nothing against Fieldstone. They didn't hold Fieldstone to the same requirement that we did at Spanish Trails, which is on 400 West. This used to be 800 West, now it's 11. Was 798, actually, and then you guys changed addresses. And so, Spanish Trails just being straight up this at 400 West and 100 South, we here came into what you've got right here, and with the other spaces they have with the road, I think that we did something here that's comparable, that's in the area. You've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 homes right here. We're talking about from here to there, 13 homes. And I can personally say, there are different quality builders. And it's not always about density. We're not asking six units, eight units, 10 units. Edge does 20 units, townhomes, in much of the North County and Utah County because of the quality. And we're not even asking that. We're here at maybe 4.5, 4.6, you know, per acre. And so, I'm just asking you tonight, do you want quality and a few extra homes with the larger homes here that will match what we're doing right here with, who are friends of mine, Arrive Home, Dean? And we abrupt that here, and then we have one road running from here to here. And Chris just wanted to make a suggestion that if you guys wanted to, and I've talked to Gordy and him, we'd be happy to keep, and have this just strictly, no entry, and have the entry come through the residential, if that's what you want. So, now put up that back, would you? Thank you so much. So, instead of 100 South, trying to get this, okay. 100 South would be closed here, and then that would be closed, and you would enter coming over from here, or enter coming from here to have an enclosed community. That's up to you. It doesn't really matter to me, Chris was, Chris, is Chris here? Yeah. Chris is here, and Chris and I talked about, and he made a suggestion. So it was staff who suggested this. And so, our lots are bigger than we have in Spanish Trails. And we have some, four luxury lots in Spanish Trails. If you drive in and take a look at the cul-de-sac, they're very beautiful homes. And these will be the homes that we'll build here, and it will be with what we have. Jed, did you want to pass out those? I've just brought some brochures for you to look at, so you can.
I've got a question for you, if that's all right.
Yeah.
So your average, you've got listed there is about 7,000. Can you tell me, because I can't tell?
Yes.
What's your smallest, what's the smallest?
About the 6,900 here, and this right here.
Excuse me, I'm 73, so, you know, I don't have my vocals.
I know.
So, we have some eights, eights, eights. We have a 9,200, 8,000, 9,000, 9,000, 8, 7,000, 7,000.
On that east side, I assume if your average is about seven, you're going to have some down?
These right here, the average is about seven on the lot size.
Can you tell me what you've got below the average?
Well, I really don't think anything, as far as 7,000?
No, yeah, so your average is 7,000.
Yeah, it's about 7,000. We might have a little bit less or a little bit more.
Look, you know what, your smallest lot size?
Well, I think the smallest lot that we had in there was, we have some that are the same size that we have at Spanish Trails, which are 5,000 to 6,000.
So we have some of those there, and on the lots there. And so this west side, the east side shows out there, we have a couple 6,000s, then we have six, we have some 5,000 to 6,000 there. You can take a look at it. We have 50-foot frontages back down to here to 60, and 52, 54 frontages.
Which we have at Spanish Trails, and that's why I've just said you can take a look at that. Across the street, if you look across the street on where the road is, we kept the density where the road is, and then when you come to the cul-de-sacs, we've made them more luxury lots, so you have a luxury lot. Understand, when we built Spanish Trails, we sold the homes for 135 to 175. Today, the homes, because of the quality that Gordy and my guys did, are selling between 325 and 450 on the same-sized lot, okay? People don't want to take care of big lots anymore, and that's why townhomes are so popular. But there's nothing wrong with a townhome if the quality is where it is. And I'm not here to say anybody, as far as if they bought these homes here, here, you know, for this Fieldstone, for the time, they were good, what they were doing. Mayor, you lived in one. And I just guarantee you, for what we're bringing you is the highest quality for a beautiful home on a smaller lot that already is in the city within five blocks from where you're at. That's what I'm saying. So, density-wise, if you take a look at it, again, we are only, you know, asking for three or four extra places, you know, for what we have, if we have the 7.6, as I talked about, depending upon what we do with this road or not.
Vic, let me give you 30 seconds to wrap up. We might have some questions for you after the public hearing.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that pretty well states what we're doing, you know? We've got a mixed, beautiful residential place, of quality, you know, construction, quality exterior. We've included, you know, the homes that Edge has done in multiple subdivisions, and we've included the ones for the later on, so.
Perfect. Thank you, Vic. Appreciate it. Okay. Want to entertain a motion to go into public hearing for this ordinance?
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilman Gordon, to go into public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in public hearing. Again, yeah, anybody that wants to speak to this specific ordinance, please come up and do that, and we'll try to answer questions.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Jessica Mickshinsky, and I want to thank you for this new plan. I like it much more than the previous plan. I, and I really like it being open to First South. I think it will make the neighborhood around a lot less traffic-y. And I have a question, so I live on the other side of those developments. I don't know if you can put back the slide that has the, oh. Yes, that, yeah, yeah, that's great, that's great. So where I live is on 1050 West. It's, oh.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's awesome. Oh, thank you. Oh, okay. I'll try not to do that. Okay, so my house is right here, and we back up to these beautiful trees that were planted right there, and we have loved them. We've lived on that lot for 15 years, and I'm really sad if they were to get torn down. So, you don't get torn down? So, but what about, I heard there's going to be a fence put up there, and so I was worried.
That depends on, we want to cooperate with the guys.
Oh, fantastic. She's so happy. I'm so happy, because I was so worried what was going to happen.
I know, I mean, I'm here, you know, I mean, I'm at the end of my career, and so I want to enjoy happiness, not, you know, sadness and negative, you know.
Well, that's fantastic. So, so then what would you do about the fence? Would you put it on the sides of it?
Well, no, I'll put the fence, you know, the fence on the side, because the fence will go in between there, so we'd have to kind of deal. Actually, I think a few of those property lines are off, I just want to tell you that.
How about wait and see if we approve it? Then you guys can talk about a fence. Okay, well, that was what I wanted to talk about, was to save the trees, and it sounds like it's going great.
Thanks, Jessica. Anyone else? Okay. No one else is to speak about this ordinance, I'll entertain a motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle and seconded by Councilwoman Beck to go out of public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are out of public hearing for this item. Moves back up here for discussion. Any questions for the administration or the applicant, or both?
Just one. This new proposal, we don't have, is that correct?
We just got it in last week after the report went to you.
Yeah. It hasn't been reviewed by anybody. This is since Planning Commission, I think.
Okay. It, way better than what we saw.
Yeah.
The Planning Commission saw part of this.
Vic, sorry, you'll have to come to the microphone.
Yeah, you have to come up there.
No, you're good, I'm saying.
The television viewers can't hear you.
Yeah, we're just, we're grateful with the Planning Commission, because John was terrific, and the council was terrific, and they came together, and they said, "Please get the measurement." We didn't have the measurements on the stuff, so they didn't know exactly what it was, and so that's why both applications, they said, "We're not, we're not favoring them, but these are some of the conditions that we'd like to have pass on to the council." And that was one of the issues that we talked about, and that's why we did this, so.
Thank you, Vic.
Okay. Dave, you're back there, I've got a question for you.
We're going to play musical chairs, sorry.
Okay, Dave, come on, Dave.
You're a healthy 70-year-old man, you can get up and down pretty easy. Yeah.
Not saying a lot, Vic.
Looking at what they posed, what we saw tonight with the 7,000 average, is that an R19? And if that's master plan, does that meet their required average lot size?
Yeah, with 34 homes, it'd be R16, and they could do that as a master plan development with 34 homes. Correct, yep.
And the general plan is?
You know, it's a stretch to go to R19. In fact, can you go to the city's website and pull that up for us right fast? Looks pretty quick. Arrive's project to the west, adjacent to this site, was zoned R19, kind of taking into account the idea that there's going to be an interchange in the area someday, and kind of the thought that with that, there's usually some value in having a little bit more intense land uses around that. So instead of being R112, adjacent to the west, again, this was zoned R19. So you can see it's surrounded by R19 zoning here. I wouldn't really give a lot of thought to what's to the north, given that it's a church. But if you go to the general plan, Nick, you'll see how we're really starting to stretch to get to R19 with the idea that this color here indicating a low-density residential designation, which is really intended to top out at about three homes per acre, which is usually our R112 zone, being the most dense zone that you would see in this particular designation here, at, you know, probably closer to, like Mr. Davano said, you'd be at about four units to the acre, this particular proposal, in an R16 zone. And with the R19 zone, you're going to be something north of three units to the acre, but particularly because of how this property was zoned and what's immediately around it. I guess it was fairly easy for me to buy into the idea that R19 was appropriate for this site, even though the general plan may suggest otherwise. So certainly taking a little bit of liberty with that, but that's just a little bit more on, what, sorry?
Sorry, Dave, don't let me cut, yeah. R16, is that following the media?
That would be, uh-huh.
So if we were to move to approve this tonight, we would need to not only make the zone change, we'd also need to make a general plan amendment, is that correct?
I think that would be appropriate if, you know, at the end of the day, that's what ends up happening, and we could do that retroactively if you wanted, or, you know, at some future date, the general plan being an advisory document.
Does it need to go back to the review committee if it's on 6?
Well, I think from that perspective, probably the concern that I would have about having a zoning district assigned tonight that really allows for development, the rural residential zone essentially doesn't do that, is that we haven't vetted everything, we haven't talked utilities, we haven't talked about some unique things that the property has that need to be dealt with when the property develops, things that are not unique to the site entirely, but we haven't fully vetted things by going through the preliminary plat review process, which we always want to do with a residential project, making sure that the zoning isn't assigned until, really, it's you that know exactly what's going to happen, exactly what the obligations of the developer are going to be when the property develops, exactly what the obligations of the city would be and that type of a thing. So for example, if you wanted ultimately to have the property developed in the R16 zone, it'd be great to get that feedback tonight from you. With that, I'd recommend that you deny the request for R3, and we would work with the applicant to bring back a project that's ready for action with a zone change, same time, at some future date.
Right now, the applicant isn't even proposing R3 at this point.
Well, what they're, what they've put on the table could be accommodated with a different zone, that's right.
Right, okay. I'm certainly not comfortable approving a zone change tonight, having seen a sketch for five minutes while Vic was talking. I cert, I do like the direction you're headed.
Absolutely.
Way better than the R3. I would like to see it to get to R9, but I understand the challenges there.
We're, we're really are going to present that plan to you, and that's why we're here tonight, and the commission said, you know, bring the plan and with the fact and what they said, you know, and stuff, and so I felt that we had done that. You see what we're going to do, we would sign a contract, I'm very familiar signing long-term contracts with, you know, the city. And so, we would buy into that and get ourselves going, you know, and doing some things. It's, one of the things, when I've had long conferences with Dave, I said, "Well, my partners in developing this are Edge Homes." And he said, "I'd like to have Edge Homes come back into the city," because he knows what we've done in the past. I say "we," you know, I just kind of feel like Gordy was my son at one time, and now, now I'm, I'm his, I'm his older brother that gets to sweep the floors, okay? So, that's why I just said that, and that's why he's here, and he had surgery, so he's not looking to come up and say a lot, but, and, but I just think it meets what the plan was when we bought it, and the other things that we were talking about on the 12 and a half acres that we traded with the city 13 years ago, you know, and stuff, so.
Vic, what happens if we do deny it tonight, and then you come back in a month after you've been to the Planning Commission?
I have, if we can do it retroactive fast, you know, and stuff like this, we'd like to build. I mean, we were literally, there are only two piece, two farms left, mine and the Christensen's. And we trade sheep. I mean, I had 68 sheep on this, you know, in end of October, November, and December, till the snow came, and they ate enough that we took the sheep off. And I've had goats on there forever, and nine goats under the trees, that you can, the big elm trees that you see right next to the west side of the house, you never even saw them, neither did the county. So, you know, and so, and then you've got the Christensen's, so people know, Christensen's property is right here, and they've got about 19 or 18, 17 acres right there, so. So we would just, if, I know you may want, the Planning Commission's thing was no townhomes, okay? And do what we're doing, and I'm down to less than four and a half units, and very prominent, very beautiful, very finished, you know, quality that you can be proud of 30 years from now, you know, as a, as a city council.
Thanks, Vic.
So for me, I agree with Jessica, I like the road coming off First South. I think that will divert, I wouldn't want all those homes traffic to go through the neighborhood, so I like that, and I really like the Edge Homes, but I also really like the R19, so I would like you guys to come back with R19 personally.
Thank you. Anything else, any discussion up here?
It will be nice to get that canal covered as well, and stuff, then, because that's...
I mean, but all those things cost money, you just can't do. I mean, I have done more canal work in the city in the last 30 years in subdivision, because we went clear from 100 down to the ball field.
We did the, we did the, we did the canal, and we did the underground and everything else on the watching trail on about 350 east, all the way from 100 South down to the new 70-acre park, okay? That's part of it. And then we ran another one underneath Spanish Trails that ends up going down now further to the west. So, I think we've done a lot of good things for the city.
Yeah, you know how to dig.
I live in an Edge Home, and I can say their quality is definitely great, I love it, I love my home. Similar to Stacy, I, I'm not comfortable with approving anything that doesn't fit within the general plan, what it's already been designated for there. I think we would need to change the general plan before I'd be comfortable with changing the zoning. I also think the closer to R9, the better, which means that your average lot size in order to fit in R9 is going to have to come up a little bit, but don't doubt at all that the quality that you're going to put there will be great.
Anything else?
My last thing is, I just wanted to remember, when we, when you take these lots here and take a look at all the things that were on this other side, and you saw 12, 13 homes from here to here, and 11 from here, we are not far off from what's been, I don't know where this R9 came into everything and stuff like this, but I'm sure, I'm positive that this does not fit all R19 over here, unless they take it.
Let me, let me go ahead and speak to that, maybe, to put an end to the discussion on this. The, that subdivision that he was pointing at with the R19 zone is part of a master plan development that had a lot of open space dedicated, and so the zone includes areas that weren't constructed on, and so they were able to put some of that density over the overall acreage. Of course, if, if there was maybe a bigger parcel or land that they were dedicating for some open space, that could be done as well, but, but yeah, it's, it's difficult to say, it, it doesn't fit when, if you don't look at the whole project that was that, that subdivision. I think, as Mr. An... As Mr. Anderson pointed out in his, his earlier comments, the, the project to the west really is kind of this, a signal of what more recently has been done. In that area to, to give an idea of what the general plan was intended to do in this area.
Nick, would you go back to the plan? His plan? Yeah. So I, I like this plan, R one six. I don't have a problem with that, but I also think it needs to go back like. Dave says back through the review committee to discuss those, those things as a city we're interested in. But I like that plan like it is right there.
Thank you. Sounds like we, we have maybe the makings of a motion up here of, of what to direct the applicant to do. Obviously you have. Some changes that happened to a plan, but you had the DRC and you had the planning commission deny this proposal. There's some changes to it that have come to us today, but. But reviewing those changes, you know, might be a wise decision in those other bodies as well. It sounds like is what I'm getting from the council, but. Can formulate a motion for that or if you have any more questions for the applicant. He's got another project after this.
The only other comment I would make that's been brought up in prior meetings is. Doing the one of us with our general plan for specific developments. I think it's important that if the general plan's in place, we do our best to try and stick with what, what prior people have put in as far as the general plan is.
Thank you, Councilman. I would entertain a motion.
I move to deny a proposal and change based on the following findings. One, that the proposal is not consistent with general planned land use map and. Second, that the R one nine or R twelve zones would be more consistent with the general plan and the surrounding neighborhood.
Second?
Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilwoman Beck. Any discussion on that moment, motion? Okay, I will call for a roll call vote. Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Beck?
Aye.
Councilman Marshall?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. We'll take a pause really quick before we move to item B. We do have. Chris's department here to be recognized and then we'll move to the next public hearing, item B. Oh geez, can't have relatives in here. Councilman Argyle?
It's the best looking department in the city, right here. Right here, the looker.
All right, I have here the Fleet and Garbage Services Division of Public Works and. Just a great group of individuals and, and they make such a great team to handle all of the fleet of Spanish Fork City and. And all of the garbage services that we provide. And this last year in twenty twenty-one, they were selected as the division of the year. For a lot of reasons and I want to go through those quickly. First of all, they, they started something where they've been able to go through town and audit. All of the cans and keep track of them and make sure that, that our cans are being built correctly. They've started a, a campaign to communicate really effectively with all the other departments and divisions in the city. Meeting with them, setting up ways to schedule maintenance on, on your equipment or your vehicles online. And getting updates on when that equipment vehicle will be done or the order will come in, which is, is really tricky now where. You'll order a piece of equipment and some of them don't come for two years. And so just working through all of those and communicating with the different divisions. Another thing that they've done is, is taken some duties that, like replacing tires that. That have typically in the past have made us have to go without a vehicle for a, a day. To bring it in, take it to be done and then going back, they've taken some of that in-house where they've been able to do it in. In an hour, hour and a half and then get the vehicle back on the road where that makes sense. Another thing that they've done is. They've brought IBS into the shop, which is, is the largest retailer of. Auto parts and, and the different things that, that we use in our mechanic shop. They've been able to bring that into the, the shops area. Much like a lot of cities and counties have done to where parts can be inventoried on site. And we can get a lot of our auto parts just right there at a shop, shop on site. And then get one bill a month for, for those parts. Now, because of the buying power of IBS. They are able to save a lot of money on the parts as well as not have to have an inventory of Spanish Fork City parts. And so this has already saved us quite a bit of money by, by doing this. The next thing that they have done is, and this is really important to me. In Public Works, there's, there's a lot of dangerous jobs out there, including the mechanic shop. And that is, is something that I worry about a lot is, is someone getting hurt. And they were able to go the whole year with zero accidents and that's a great accomplishment, not having any accidents in a, in a whole year. And then Councilman Gordon had talked a little bit about the transfer station. And Max serves on our technical committee, wherever he is, there's Max. He serves on the technical committee and, and. Works hard with the, the garbage district to, to make sure that we can get a new, good transfer station in place that. Maybe won't be so dirty and unkempt as, as the one that we're in now and. And so he's worked hard with the district to get that done and, and supported their efforts and. And the last couple of things is, is kind of what Councilman Gordon's already talked about. Some of the things that the district's been able to do by, by selling unneeded parts of, of the landfill. And sharing that with multiple other districts as, as well as establishing new era. Has really brought costs from around twenty dollars a ton to ten dollars a ton and, and, and it's just cut costs in half. And that's why a lot of these things that we're doing by building the new transfer station are not creating large rate increases because. Of some of the things that the district's been able to do. So hats off to the Fleet and Garbage Services Division. They've done an outstanding job for the city. And just really appreciate working with all these, these great individuals. I'll just read their names. And then we'll give them each a plaque that they can have. And I'll just grab these in order out of the box, but Gatlin Gardner. Nico Chardine. Paul Fulmer. Adam Pullen. Adam's leaving us.
What?
But he'll, wherever he goes, he's going to put that on his wall there in his office, okay? Tanner Anderson. And Max Sabey. We have one more for Taylor, but it's not in the box, so we'll. Oh wait, hey, it is.
He can have Adams.
It's kind of hidden down there.
Good work, guys.
Hey, Chris. So they're going to do this again next year. Can we get them to put a tie on, especially the one on the end there?
We can give the one on the end five minutes to talk about his uncle.
Maybe put those plaques up. Show the plaques, guys. Show the hardware. There you go. There you go.
One, two, three.
Better shake everybody's hand. It's kind of the tradition.
So Mayor, maybe while they're, while they're filing out, let me just add. While they're, while they're filing out, I think there are a couple of things that we ought to highlight. First of all, we've learned today that if you're late to a meeting. Then you have to bring donuts, so as they were an hour late, yeah, we'll make sure that they understand.
They can just go to the Parks and Rec Committee.
Oh no, it's, it's this group that gets donuts. So I mean, I hate to tell you, you have to come back in two weeks, but we'll be here on March first and they will have donuts with. What, what was it? German chocolate. Uh, one other thing I don't think Chris mentioned that they did, but it was super impressive about this group. They're an internal service group, right? They, they do our fleet and they put out a survey amongst all the. The, the customers that they serve each year. How can we better serve you? And they get some pretty candid feedback. And every year they tick off two or three of those items on the list and, and just identify some simple ways, some creative ways, some innovative ways to. To do what they do better, smarter, faster, cheaper. And, and it's just really neat to see how, how they care about what they do and how they create. Create goodness about, about where they are. So hats off to those guys. They've all left, so I can say this without any kind of a. You know, supposed whatever, but we really appreciate the ingenuity of these, that the motor, the motor pool group comes to, comes to us with, so. Good to recognize them. Thank you.
Nice, very good group.
Thanks. Thank you, Chris. Okay, we'll get back to the public hearing section of our agenda. This is item B on the public hearing. Coordinates Z zero two dash twenty-two D land east. The proposal involves changing the current zone. From PF to R three for property located at approximately thirty-one hundred east, eighteen fifty south in Spanish.
Once again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You can see the subject property here. It's on the north side of the golf course, just west of the river, on the south side of River Bottoms Road. It's a beautiful piece of property. Let me mention this now just so I don't forget. Over the course of the last several days, in fact, this afternoon, we received quite a bit of correspondence in our office, emails and different things like that. I haven't seen all of it, but just asked Kimberly Brenman in our office to forward it on to you as it came in, so. Hopefully you have everything that we've received to date, including correspondence that we had received before that. Even was uploaded when the agenda went out last week and that type of a thing, so. I acknowledge that we have all of that and we'll certainly get that to Tara as well to have all of that attached to the minutes for tonight. The proposal in some ways is similar to what we looked at earlier. In some ways it's very different. The applicant has requested the R three zone. This is for a piece of property that has a fairly unique history. I don't want to get into all the details on that, but in short. I would like to say that. Even though the city's general plan, for example, for this site is public facilities. Speaking for myself, I do believe that given how the applicant came to own the property. That there certainly is an expectation that he would be able to develop it and use it in a fashion that's not consistent with our public facility zone or the public facilities general plan designation, so. We would expect some changes to those two documents at some point in time. Seems like this is probably the right time to, to at least think about that. Ultimately, those are decisions for you to make. But that being the case, I, I think really the slate is more clean here than with, for example, what we just talked about. That being said, you have our report with the imagery that we had when the reports needed to be prepared last week. We have some additional imagery that I'll go through tonight and I'll let the applicant, of course, touch on all of that as well. In my view, and I'm really just speaking for myself now. I don't think that in terms of this property developing residentially, so assuming that's the direction that we're going in, that. There would be a zone change to allow for it to develop with homes. That necessarily the number of homes that ultimately gets built there matters nearly as much as how those homes are built. And really just what the level of quality is. We don't have other properties in the city that you could say, you know, have some kind of golf course orientation type potential like this site does. Otherwise, the setting is magnificent. I think for every reason. I would want to promote the idea that homes that built here should be the highest level of quality. Frankly, that usually boils down to how much it costs to build per square foot and that sort of a thing. And there are a couple of things I think that are worth considering then from a site design perspective. To a very large extent, the size of home that you can fit in a lot, particularly if we're talking about homes that have a front loaded garage. And, you know, with the size, frankly, a lot of times there is a connection to that overall price per square foot and quality. That ties oftentimes more to lot width than lot size or any other characteristics. So for example, the ability to. To have a third car garage and that sort of a thing. Lot width becomes a big deal. And that being said, the particular. Thanks, Nick. So I believe this is the latest iteration that we have, single family homes and townhomes. And with that, lots that have everywhere from just over fifty feet to just over sixty feet of, of lot width here. And one thing to consider is the idea that typically with a, with a sixty foot wide lot, you can't accommodate a third car garage. Another thing that the applicant has discussed is the prospect of having homes that would be built here, not access directly onto River Bottoms Road, but rather. What for me is akin to frontage road or something like that. There's another phrase that could be used to describe that. Personally, I think this can be done very, very well and that it can help manage traffic on a road like River Bottoms Road. Talking now about just details that have more to do with subdivision design than really the question that's before you tonight, which is zoning. And I'll, I'll kind of wrap with that, but with, for example, the townhomes over here. The idea that the frontage, if you will, that the site shares with the river and the golf course, that that's maximized by having homes that. Orient directly to that and maybe accommodating connections, you know, via image view corridors or. Pedestrian access to the river itself and those types of things might be considerations for the next go around on this. Just another iteration with a slightly different number of homes there, seventy-three being the total there, sixty-six being the total here. This was the original one that we saw and I think the applicant's moved on from that. I want to talk about this and I just actually saw these for the first time today. I believe Edge Homes delivered these to us last week. We would see this product built throughout Spanish Fork. And for that reason alone, I don't think it's the right fit for the site that we're talking about. Again, I don't have a concern with townhomes necessarily, the number of homes. We're really here tonight to hear what you're comfortable with and what you want to see. So that we can kind of make a connection between that and an appropriate zoning district. But the idea that the homes that would be built in this project aren't a distinctly unique design for the site. Or at least what I would call an elevated design that's different from what is currently in being built. You know, you could say on, on any site in Spanish Fork, I think is at least a missed opportunity. I'd say the same. I'd say the same about the single-family home imagery that we were given. Once again, in my mind, not what I would anticipate seeing in the kind of environment that we're talking about for the reasons that I've already touched on. So not to go overboard on that, I won't say much more other than that by going through zone change process with a preliminary plat review and being able to focus on design more and I think by expecting more of the applicant, this development could take on a totally different character and really be a gem for the community forever. I think it's hard to look at the golf course oriented development that's happened so far in Spanish Fork around the Oaks and make many comparisons, because those homes for the most part were built a really long time ago. But when homes that are around the Oaks were built, they were top-notch. You know, that absolutely was an upgrade. That was the best of the best at that point in time. And it's hard for me to say that about this. Beautiful homes, right? Beautiful townhomes, but we're talking about a site that I think warrants more. So, that's one for me, kind of distinct thing to think about, almost a distraction for tonight, because really we're hoping to get more input on just the overall number of homes that you'd feel comfortable seeing on the site. And to maybe add a little bit of context to that with the idea that we're looking for the same type of action from you as what you made on the last application, where I think we got a very good indication from you as to what zoning district you'd be comfortable with there and why. And we anticipate working with the applicant to come back in the near future with a plan that's ready for action with that zone. In this case, where the applicant has, let's just say 10 and a half acres plus or minus, the, I think, most recent plan that we have here of 73 units, that would require the R3 zone to go 73 units. And as Mr. Devano pointed out, if that gets reviewed with a preliminary plat, we could do a development agreement and all different types of things that would be very binding in terms of how the homes would look and how any amenities that could be constructed here, landscaping and those types of things, how all of that would be designed. And we would bring that agreement back to you with a preliminary plat and a zone change at some point in the future. The next zoning opportunity is the R16 zone and the most homes that could be fit on this site with that zoning district would be 55. So we're now, they're asking for 73 with the R16. Again, that ceiling would be 55. And then from there, we go down to 42 with the R18, 37 with the R19, 27 with the R112. And I'll stop there unless you want me to keep going, but I mention that because I think you have every tool in your toolbox to use for sake of this discussion tonight, giving direction to staff. I have one more thought about design that I'll mention briefly, but again, we're really looking for your feedback tonight. I appreciated the input that we got from neighbors in the planning commission meeting and certainly appreciated the direction that we got from the planning commission, which I believe is that they're comfortable with something that kind of fits this general mold, subject to some details being worked out. And the development review committee, I think, as much as anything, has concerns about acting on R3 zone change with the number of homes that we initially saw and kind of the design that we initially saw for this. There's one more thing relative to the property. There is a portion of it that is in the 100-year floodplain. That can't be swept under the carpet and can't be just ignored. That is something that we would have to address as we go through a preliminary plat review process. That'll take a little bit of time. That absolutely can be dealt with though. I'm completely confident of that, so that's not a big distraction for us as we move forward to work with the applicant to put an actual development plan together for the site, but that has to be addressed. We've had actually a couple of negative experiences in recent years where we haven't been as methodical on the front-end of reviewing a development proposal that had some area in the 100-year floodplain. And we as staff now regret that and how it's playing out with future homeowners and that type of a thing. So, we've learned the hard way and I say that as much as anything, just to get that out in the open.
Dave, can you show us where that is?
I can, and Nick, if you want to, you can even go to the city map. It's right in here.
Okay, that whole piece?
Just kind of right in the middle, almost like a pie-shaped piece here, so to speak. And the other thing that I want to mention, I think being sensitive to the homes that are adjacent to this, to the north, the townhomes, there's a single-family home as well, I'm of the opinion of why not? There would be some impact on the view that those homes have, so we're talking about this area right in here. So that's what I was just pointing out. So certainly some of the property is not in that floodplain, but you do have an area that is. I think in terms of moving forward, maybe if we just ask any other questions about this before I wrap up?
Two. What's the density of this along here? And wasn't, wasn't one time this, wasn't an approved subdivision for a short period of time?
I don't believe it ever has been, but before my time, it might have been. These townhomes here are actually part of a bigger development that includes the single-family homes up above to the north. So the density's kind of spread out over that whole area. I think this is in the eight to 10 range here, depending on exactly how you measure out that area and do that math. But, Nick, again, the last thought that I have is just, you know, some kind of sensitivity to folks over here on the north side of River Bottoms Road. One, a couple that I spoke with reference, for example, the Ridge Townhomes that are east of the neighborhood Walmart, if you can picture those. Pretty tall, big, massive, bulky buildings. Not that the applicant has suggested that he's going to do anything like that here that he'd like to. I think being sensitive to just the design and the profile of buildings and things like that to minimize that particular impact on adjacent properties, I think it's easy to do. I don't think there's a loser as we do that. And that's kind of my last thought on design. So to wrap up, again, relative to recommending that the zone change that's proposed for tonight be denied, that is staff and the planning commission's recommendation, but I think that was made entirely with the idea that this is a work in progress and we'd like to get some direction from you in terms of what you would be comfortable with. So again, as we work with the applicant, and they spend a lot of money now on engineering and that type of a thing, hopefully they're only spending that money once as we prepare something that you'd be comfortable approving in the future. Certainly not asking for any firm commitments tonight, we know that's not appropriate, but we still love whatever insight and guidance you can provide.
With that being your recommendation, I think in the last 11 years, I can't recall too many projects that have came before the council that have been denied by the DRC and the planning commission, right? I can remember one up by maybe Maple Mountain or the others. Is this because Mr. Devano wanted to bring forth or is that my understanding?
Yeah.
Okay. So, will we still be required to go through another public hearing if we were to deny like we did the last one? Like we're going to have?
I believe so, yep. So there'd be, the process would be identical. In fact, the difference would be, and for me this is really critical, we would have a fully developed plan for the development of the property. Obviously, the applicant's given us a picture here of what they'd like to do, but still there is a lot of kind of flesh missing from the skeleton, if you will. And going through the typical process, that would be different. You would know everything about how the development would look. And importantly for staff, we would know exactly how utilities are going to be provided and what road improvements are made and all of those different things, which we don't spend a lot of time typically talking about in public forums because I think we often just take it for granted. But those are really big deals and we don't want to recommend that you act prematurely before those have all been vetted and we have solutions for any problems that might come up.
Dave, I can't tell from here, but how deep are these lots?
I am going to ask the applicant to get out his magnifying glass if he can tell us.
185.
So up to 185?
Yes.
The average depth typically being about 100 feet. So I know they are deeper than what we typically see in the city and if something were to happen, Nick, can you go one, there we go, where you had some kind of an access road in front still, I don't think the depth would be adversely impacted that way.
Are they required or would they be required to have an access down on the west end?
That's an access.
I guess my question, I'm wondering, and I'm not a designer and I can tell you how to build your lot, but I'm wondering are these deep enough? And they're probably not, but to bring a road off of here and do a cul-de-sac down on the side and have two lots?
To do our smallest road, which is a 54-foot wide right-of-way, you probably could do something like that. Having the cul-de-sac, that would impact the amount of space that would be, you know, used for a facility like that the most. But you could do that and still single-load it with lots on one side.
Yeah, 'cause I don't know how I feel about having driveways on each of these, obviously. That's why they're looking at this road here, but I don't know how I build a, how a road next to a road either. I don't know.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dave? Okay, we might have some more questions for you in a minute, Dave. Invite the applicant. Mr. Devano, if you want to come up and speak to this for a bit and then we'll take some public hearing.
Can we find a bit?
A bit?
Yes.
Yes, 10 minutes.
Okay. So, thank you very much. I'm a little bewildered by a few things. I won't address them at the moment. We've gone over this plan and with Dave and the development department and stuff as far as the city goes. And I want to just tell you, because you need to understand the history of what's gone on here. They came to me for 12 and a half acres, which we owned, on the west side where the jail and the courts are, okay? And you still have about seven acres to develop there. They came to me and said, "We want to trade you this property if you'll take this property up here." And I can assure you that my people who are all involved in this, at that time, we counted on the city, knowing that they even put a, "Well, you got to do this in a year." Really, you know? And I gave 12 and a half acre feet of water. I gave all the water for the project of our 12 and a half acres. They gave me nothing and said, "We will provide the water for what you end up doing and by the way, pay us $20,000." I did all that. I did all that. Okay, that's just the first thing. I trusted the city 13 years ago that I was trading 12 and a half acres of developable property, which we were developing there already on the west side, to help the city and get a court and their sheriff and their police all right in that area. That's what we did. Anybody can say what they want. They had a clause in there that this will be gone for a year and blah, blah, blah. But I have a thing called integrity that I live by. And when I trade something, it's not to be Indian-traded 10 years, 13 years, 15 years later. Also, you must understand, the planning commission said this. The planning commission said, "We like this project. We wanted to know what the sizes of the lots were, what the sizes of the townhomes were." There's no way that we're building townhomes. Those are our general townhome lots and things that we have. We're, we'll show the development review and come back to show you what we were building. We're going to build something, when you take a look at this, you're going to be proud of this golf course entity. I happen to belong to a very nice club in Provo Riverside Country Club. And the houses, we have some townhomes that are built and then we have some luxury lots that are built on the west side of the project there, because it was limited. This is totally why, why the planning commission said this should be approved as its own entity. First of all, Datweiler was a friend of mine. Datweiler was killed here about 15 years ago when he tried to lift out his little pup with his backhoe and it rolled over and squashed him, unfortunately. There's eight units right here per acre. Now, you can say, "I give you density and whatever," just like the last thing, and I just wanted to say one thing because I didn't get to say it. I can give you property on the river that's not developable on the west side and count it as my density, but builder smaller lots all through there. Go take a look at it. That's what had happened. So, they give you property that you can't use on the river with it going up on the west side, and then they built that whole subdivision in there. That's all I'm saying there. It's not apples to apples and it's certainly not quality equality. And I hope somewhere along the line in the city, you know, that I can get something in favor of what quality is worth and what homes are costing now just from two years ago. 185,000 now to 350,000. So, how many people can afford 8, 9, 10, 11,000 square feet? I could probably go find somebody that will buy this thing and probably put eight luxury homes if that was the case. It's a golf course property and it's the only one you have of this nature, because there are some townhomes and stuff up on the upper homes, on the upper lots, holes, excuse me. And so, we're not doing anything really different and why are we doing a slip road? A slip road has been proven and we have them in Salt Lake County. One's 1,000, 2,000 feet that Edge Homes has done. And they're beautiful because you keep all these cars off the road. I went the last three nights here. And these are, you have some garage entries, you have some garage, but you have this slip, this is really just a slip road here that goes between these. And it's owned by the HOA. And we would be somewhat in the same situation with here. We've done four entrances for one reason, to move traffic. So, move traffic here, move traffic there, move traffic here, move traffic over here. That's why we've done this. It's well-planned. We have parks, just like they do across the street. We have a park here and we have a park up here. So the condos and townhomes can have a park here, we can have a park for these people, but everybody will be in the association to be able to use it. So we didn't not think that was not necessary. They talked about the river. Well, as a kid, I lived on Lake Michigan. I was two and a half blocks from Lake Michigan as a five-year-old. I never drowned, but I went down to Lake Michigan every day in the summer, in the summer that was warm, and I swam and had fun and there was another 2, 3, 4,000 children at the same way, because we were in a low district where we didn't have any money. So playing in Lake Michigan was a bonus for us, you know, on that basis. So, I don't buy into the fact people wanted to know about what's going to happen here. Well, rivers are all over. We have rivers all over that are never fenced and whatever, and if it felt that we had to do something, we'd look at it and do it. What I'm telling you here is the product here, when we bring the final product to you, the product that you got, I'm not sure why, I never even saw that, I'm just sorry, because that's not what we're going to do. We're going to do where you've got a lot more stone and brick and pop-outs that, you know, are two-tone colors and everything else that we do in other subdivisions. These will be very nice luxury homes. We, the reason they're deep is that we want to keep 30 feet off of the golf course. We're trying to keep this 30 feet perimeter between 20 and 30 feet off the golf course. But you know, much of the property up on the east side is right on the golf course and there's no nets, no fencing, no nothing. And I don't know how many times EMTs have been called up there, I'm not sure. I was up at Sundance, I think we had more calls at Sundance for people falling and breaking a leg than we do from people being hit by golf balls. I do, I have the neighborhood from over here, I've told them they can walk on this and they can pick up golf balls. They've had over 500 the last three, four years and it's been kind of fun to have them. So I'm just asking you to really take a look at, slip road, we're keeping cars on our side. I forgot to tell you one thing, I went over here and I went over here the last couple of nights, and you can go up there right now, I counted 18 cars parked on both sides of the thing. At 5:30, there was about 12 cars and there was 18 cars about 8 o'clock when I went home. And so, we don't have that problem. We're not going to have that problem, you know? We're going to mandatory, just the same way, you can't park on the street. Right here, they have the same thing, you can't park on the street and we'll have the same thing. So it's no different. But they park over here for right now. Now, we had 18 homeowners of these townhomes here and by the time we left, you can go back and check, check, check the minutes, they all liked what we were doing. May have some new ones here tonight that don't know what's going on. But I think you have a fiduciary responsibility to me personally about doing something with this property. This property is not part of the River Bottoms, it's totally part of what's gone on in this configuration, because it is totally surrounded by the golf course and River Bottoms Road and not connected to anything that's going to be down in the River Bottoms. and not connected to anything that's gonna be down in the River Bottoms. So, it's totally enclosed. And, uh, we feel that the quality we're going to do, we have only asked, we're doing seventy-three total units, sixteen luxury lots, we take this thing right here. Here, and then our townhomes here. Which our townhomes will range between twenty-eight to about thirty-eight hundred, and be very nice, you know? So, that's what we're doing. And I, I hope for your support here, because I keep seeing delay and delay, but you have a plan in front of you. You have the history of thirteen years ago. We have finally waited all this time to bring something to you that we felt was comparable. I have been injured twice in that time, and so I have not done a lot of development in that time. So, uh, I'm asking you now to take a look at what happened thirteen years ago, and we ride on the city. We traded the city, they have great property, they've been able to build and develop. And, uh, I have twenty-seven seconds. So, I'm just asking you tonight, I always hear delay, delay more, and whatever, what is the delay? Is it a good plan? And if we bring back the product that we give to Dave and his team, and, and sends to you, I'm happy to have you guys look at it and approve it, you know, and stuff like this, but give me something so I can move forward. I've held on this for a long time, and now I'm feeling good. So, I'm coming in front of you, and I don't make a fool of myself, you know, blubbering sometimes, you know? When I had brain injuries, it's my fifth brain injury in my life. So, I'm asking for you to take consideration of what really is here, and what we're going to do. And we'll have it approved. We'll have Dave and you guys look at the plans that we plan to perform in, and approve it. We understand how valuable this is, here and there, to be able to have golf course front property.
Thank you, Vic, appreciate it, thank you.
Motion to go into public hearing.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Gordon, and seconded by Councilman Argyle, to go into public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're in public hearing. Again, uh, yep, we've got the timer up there, feel free to come speak to the mayor and council about this development, if you'd like. We'll take notes.
My name's Stephen Martins, I live at twenty-nine sixty-eight East Canyon Crest, up here in the cul-de-sac. Apparently, we're not within the three hundred feet to get even noticed that this was going on. And though, no, it doesn't impede my traffic, uh, it impedes beauty, of course, which my neighbor Susan Davis, who lives at twenty-nine sixty-two, she could not be here tonight. And, uh, the beauty, the crowding, and safety, in the last five years, we've had so much more traffic and issue for us to be concerned. I have eight kids, and so, where traffic has been Facebook alarms of theft, people stealing gas, et cetera. And I'm not saying this is gonna be criminal-ridden, you know, housing development going on here, but more crowding seems to bring more look-aloo's, trying to find uneasy pickings. And so, I've had to put a recent issue against an individual in town who's become more familiar with our home and our ter, our, our family, watching us from above and below. And now with housing coming in, that's more places for him to hide, potentially. I like the idea of the islands on the lake, and this maybe would be a really nice fit on one of those islands out on Utah Lake. I don't know, that, that might be a trade down the, down the line. Uh, but I've lived here for fifteen years in that house, and, uh, in the River Bottoms area for almost twenty years now. And, uh, the, the rural part of it has been an absolutely wonderful part of this whole area. And if it's a single-level, double-level, or triple, like the small mart up there on Highway Six, it's gonna completely take away from what we've been able to enjoy out there in this part of our, our, um, our neighborhood. I also am concerned personally with going all the way down towards fairgrounds. This is the beginning of a snowball effect, in my opinion, that's just gonna slowly take all the rural out of River Bottoms that has made a little bit of country feel for our community to enjoy, as opposed to Provo the second. And so, um, all my old friends in town that live all over the valley talk about back in the day, Orem used to be farm fields, Provo used to be farm fields. Well, now I'm the, the next up-and-coming old guy, so to speak, that's gonna say, "Yeah, it used to be as far as you could see." And so, our concern is with our children, our family, the beauty that we enjoy, uh, the safety, and then, of course, the traffic, since a lot of the new developments have come along, I've got a lot more speed racers going up along my road. I'd rather they just stay out of our area, but they're going down our road, it's gonna just elevate even more down below. I've got new neighbors who, because of their, their influence, we got the note from them. Otherwise, I'd have been ignorant to this whole thing, and so, yeah, I didn't know about anything until tonight, and this is no offense to you also. I appreciate development and having the integrity and, uh, you know, work ethic to do something like this. It's just, uh, it affects us towards a, a little bit more negative than positive. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.
Hi, thank you so much, and just a quick unrelated note, thank you for the work you did at the high schools. I actually heard about this last night at our dinner table. I have a, a junior at Spanish Fork High, and he brought it up spontaneously, and for a sixteen-year-old to bring that up, I think that's pretty impressive. I think you, I think you made an impact there, so thank you very much. My name's Rachel Summers, I live on twenty-nine seventy-seven, uh, River Bottoms Road, that's directly across from this. Um, and I, we moved to the area because we wanted more land, we wanted more space, and we loved and fell in love with the River Bottoms area. This is something that I think is so unique to the city, but also to the county. There's just nothing like it left in Utah County, and I think it deserves to be preserved and, um, and, and taken care of, because of its unique rural character. And, um, I, I just, also, I, you know, we, because our lot size is larger, you know, there are, we're on half, half an acre right there. And, and because of that, I don't think that many people knew about it. So, I, I did take some time to get to talk to some of the neighbors who may not have heard about it, didn't get the public notice, but live close and enjoy the same, uh, views and the same character of the River Bottoms that we enjoy. And everyone that I spoke to was, uh, in agreement with me about wanting to preserve this area, that high-density housing is not appropriate for the entrance to the River Bottoms. And, um, and so, I just wanna leave that with you, there are a couple comments that were made, um, about the Planning Commission, that I was there for that meeting as well. And, um, one small correction I wanted to mention is that not all of the Planning Commission was on board with what, what we've seen tonight. Um, there were some comments about much lower density, larger lots, taking advantage of that, which I certainly would lean more towards. And, uh, the other thing too is that we just wanna maintain the, the, the beauty of the area. And I think we'll hear more, hopefully, from some of the neighbors, um, tonight, that will speak to that. But, um, I'm probably forgetting something, but I'm just glad to be here. I honestly didn't know if I'd make it, 'cause Baby's about to make his appearance in this world any day now. And so, I'm happy that I was, he held off. He knows it's important to his mom, so, thank you very much for your time, and, and please, um, I would ask you to follow the recommendations of the DRC and the Planning Commission to the night's request.
Thank you, Rachel.
Hi.
My name's Ken Nielsen, and I live at seventeen twenty-eight South, twenty-nine hundred East, just last house there on the west side of twenty-nine hundred. Lived there for twenty years, raised my family here. For my kids, this is their playground. Now, I understand that, uh, you know, you know, the farmers are getting old, and they're selling their property, things are changing, and it's just a real tragedy, because the River Bottoms is a treasure for Spanish Fork. And, uh, you know, people go down there to, again, to, to recreate, to meditate, to do all kinds of things. And, um, bringing in so many, uh, homes into this area is gonna, again, somebody else brought it up, it's, it's gonna have a ripple effect. What happens here affects the entire River Bottoms. Also, the traffic that comes in from, there's two roads that come in there, two small roads. One, if you're coming in from the Little Acorn, that is a tough turn to make. And, uh, um, you know, the amount of traffic that's gonna be increased just to accommodate this, is gonna even further erode the rural and beauty of this, of the, uh, of this area. One of the things I would, I'm not sure if I understood it right or not, but one of the things that I, if, if I understand it right, public access to the river, uh, is some, is probably the only thing I like about the plan. However, I do understand, you know, you have property, you wanna be able to do something with it. But, um, I, I'd much prefer it to be much lower density, we need fewer people down there, less traffic, help it, to try to help and keep things, uh, a little safer for the people that will be playing down there. Kids go down there all the time, crossing that road. Um, I crossed that road, and, like I say, I mean, I think you're all familiar with that area. And, uh, so again, as a recreational place, we just need to keep it as open as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Good evening, everyone, um, thank you for the Valentine stuff that you did. I have a grandson in Junior High, and he was saying that it was difficult even for them, because they don't always get, you know, Valentine's. So, to see that it was happening at the high school, I just thought, "That was awesome." I loved seeing it on the news, and then to see your high school pictures too, that was fun. We're gonna do that.
Tell us your name, so she can get it in the record.
Well, I went to Provo High School.
Okay.
So, um, my name is Kathy Adams, and I live at twenty-seventh, twenty-seven sixty-eight East Canyon Crest Drive. Like I said, I grew up in Provo, and, um, I actually cruised the main streets of Spanish Fork in high school. Loved coming to Spanish Fork, loved the rural areas, um, always went to the rodeos, um, I just, the rural feeling. Um, and that's gone in so many of the other communities, and that was part of what made us decide to buy a home here. Um, we're on twenty-five acres, and we love that view, we love seeing people out on the golf course, it's fun to see them. We're just right, well, you can't see it because of the time, but we're just right at the very end where the water tower, where the water, yeah, so. This is right here. And so, we have the most beautiful view. If you've got on my Facebook page, you would see all the, um, pictures that I have of the area, and what we lovingly, lovingly call the bands, and just the views from there when the sun comes in, it's just, it's so beautiful. Um, the deer that are there, it's just a beautiful area. And I'm not opposed to development, I know that that needs to happen. What we would love to see is, you know, homes that have a three-car garage, that are pristine. Um, to me, I'm a little concerned about townhomes. I just think the traffic, the amount of people, you know, we already have a lot of new construction going on right over there by the market. It's already increased the traffic quite a bit over there, and I just see that this townhome, um, suggestion would create just a lot of traffic. So, my preference, and my family's preference would be that we, you know, have larger lots, more pristine homes. I mean, when you think about, you know, the view off the golf course, the view that you have of the mountains, I think the people would pay the price, you know, for that. When we moved here four years ago, we spent over a half a million dollars, we loved that view. And I think people will do that if you, you know, give them the bigger lots, and they'll love those views, and they'll love, you know, what they have down there on the golf course. And so, that would be my vote anyway, we'd kind of do something more like that.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Kathy. What's your high school fa, on, high school photo on your Facebook page, we'll find it there.
Okay.
Anyone else? Yeah?
My name is Manuela Neuschwander, and I'm originally from Germany, I moved to Utah in nineteen ninety-three. And I have come to love Utah very much, and, um, I have lived in Woodland Hills and twenty-nine hundred East before. And now I live down, since seven years, I live down by the River Bottoms in, in one of those townhouses in the back row. And, um, so, all the concerns and issues already have been mentioned. And so, I did a little bit math in my mind, and so, with, uh, seventy-three, uh, new families, people whatsoever, times that by two, times that by three, or even more, that adds up to one fifty to over two hundred. And those people probably, or neighbors, need to go to work, take kids to schools, and whatsoever, college students, and so on and so forth. So, that would add a big amount to our traffic, and I'm going, I'm going to work every day on Highway Six, and I saw the increase within seven years, what's going on, the traffic jams in Spanish Fork. I mean, it has quite, quite a bit increased, and I see a problem with having so much more traffic coming into it. And also, um, all the wildlife we have, I just saw a big deer family in that area, and we know we have birds in there, and Watson, you, you know, that will be all diminished, the light pollution, I suppose, there's a lady in our area who has, people come over to see fireflies, I think, and so, I think the light pollution would affect that as well. And so, like, everybody else already said, it's such a rural environment, and, and there's so much peace to it. And I think adding, and I'm not against development either, but I think this specific part of land is just, I feel in my heart not, not the right place to, to build so many homes. Maybe compromising it for just a few or something, and then make it all nice and parky, I don't know, but, um, just, yeah, I'm, I'm very concerned about that too, and so, I hope that we find a, a golden middle way of compromise. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Anyone else to speak to this ordinance?
Um, my name is Jay Woods, and, uh, my wife and I live at twenty-six eighty-two East Canyon Crest Drive. And, uh, we got home from a mission, we served as missionaries in Powell Meyer, New York, in two thousand and eighteen. We got back, and, uh, our, our church leader wanted us to make a commitment to stay in our area for four years. And, uh, I told him we couldn't do that, he wondered what our plans were, 'cause he called my wife to be, um, have a certain calling in church. And, uh, he finally said, "Hey, why don't you make it to your commitment?" And I said, "You know, I thought about it," and, uh, my other church leader said, "Yeah, Jay, you know, you'll receive the same blessings if you, if you do that," because we had plans on going on other, on other missions and stuff. And, uh, so, we didn't tell him that we were planning on moving, we wanted to buy a different home. So, our parents, when they came and visited my wife, and, and my wife's mom and, uh, stepfather, when they came and visited, they could actually stay with us, because we lived in a house, you had to go downstairs or upstairs, as soon as you go in the first, the seven stairs to get into the house. So, we wanted to buy a house, so we kept looking, but we had made a year, a commitment to stay two years. And, uh, so, we kept looking at homes, we were looking at new homes. We realized that the most important thing to us was a view. And we all, we basically looked at new homes, because we didn't want a realtor to come out, show us a home, and we knew we couldn't buy it. Well, the house that we bought, we were driving around, and I kept seeing on the internet, and I said, "Steph, we need to go look at this house." So, we drove over there, and I don't believe in coincidences, they were having an open house. And A.J. Michaels, it was the realtor, so we walked in there. And we're just like, we looked at the view, and we're just like, "Wow." You know, we'd probably looked at over a hundred homes, we had never seen a view that nice. And the next morning, I looked at her, and I said, "We have to buy that house." 'Cause we will never buy a house that has that kind of a view. When you walk out in the back, on the, on the patio, it's like you're camping. I mean, the view of this golf course and this River Bottoms is just gorgeous. And we just, so we called that mortgage guy, and we said, "Can we do, make this deal?" And he said, "Sure." And so, we actually bought the house. We owned two houses for about ten months, we didn't tell anybody in our, in our ward in, in Provo that we had another house. So, we moved Steph, you know, and my, and Stephanie was staying over here about half the time, half the nights, just because it's so beautiful. And so, ten months later, we, uh, put our house up for sale there, and we, um, moved over here. And we're in our house because of the view, it's just incredible. And we just think that this would change the view quite a bit. But, uh, anyway, thanks.
Thanks, Jay.
Have a great day.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, come to my porch any time. I have my jaw, it's the best view in town.
Only if you're barbecuing. Anybody else to speak to this ordinance? We, we might have a couple questions for you, Vic, later, when we discuss it up here. a couple of questions for you, Vic, later when we discuss it up here. Okay, if there's no other here for the public hearing on this, this ordinance, I'll make, entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
Motion to go out of public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle and seconded by Councilman Gordon to go out of public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose. Okay, we're out of public hearing. So we're up here to discuss this ordinance and, and ask questions of staff or anybody that should need some clarification on.
I had a question for Dave. Current zoning is public facility. Maybe you can address or talk to the history if you know, when was that changed and maybe the purpose as to why this property got that designation?
The city owned it. And I think almost the city, so I've got to speculate a little bit. We've looked into that and I've tried to, to find an exact answer to the very question you're asking. And I don't have one. But it seems to be that the city viewed it as part of the golf course at one point in time or something like that. It was owned by the city as was the golf course. And I think back when the public facilities zone was created, that's why it was assigned to this property. And I don't know if it was subsequent to that, that the arrangement was made to trade property so that Mr. DeVano took ownership of it or not. It was about the same era, two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, when both of those events happened. So.
Thank you. If I may, just start now to, I don't want to influence anybody's discussion up here. I just want, you know, my history of this property runs a little deep since I'm twelve years old and, and lived close to here. My older brother owned the house up here just to, just a year ago when he sold it. But my stomping grounds all over this place, when I was twelve, I guess what I want to speak to generally the residents is, we're, we're gonna hear both of you. We're gonna hear the, the landowner, obviously, that has rights and has history of what happened here. And, and I always wondered, I mean, I, I haven't hit as many golf balls in here as Brandon Gordon ever has, but I always wondered when I lost balls in here how, you know, why there wasn't houses here. And, and the reason why is because maybe the city owned it a long time ago. But, but I know they haven't owned it for a while. So I've always wondered. So I think generally, inside the city, everybody's had a notion, at least myself, since eight years doing this, that something was, was being built here at some point. It's just what kind of plan it was. And so I like to ever mention the happy medium of, of what happens here. It is something that, that probably happens here. I guess my personal, if we're into giving personal opinions, my personal opinion of this, this is one of the gems of our community. And us as residents, every single one of you, has put in the last five, six years maybe, about five million dollars into this gem, into this jewel, the golf course, in both a clubhouse, a reception center, as well as an irrigation system that's going to be second to none. So this is public infrastructure that has been invested here over many decades, but, but especially heightened over the last few years. It is not a country club. It's not Riverside Golf Course, but it's our Riverside Golf Course. And so I am of the opinion, whatever gets developed here, and something is going to be developed here, that it, we get the very, very best product for our Riverside Golf Course because we don't have any more of it. This is the last probably development that touches the golf course. And, and that doesn't mean that, I concur with some of the sentiments Dave had, that it, it's not necessarily a density thing as it is the product thing that we can do and, and get, get some places. But that's, that's off the cuff, my personal opinion. But I just figured I'd prime you guys from talking about it.
Sure.
I'll go. First, I'd like to see who, maybe Seth could address the contract, but Vic?
Oh, yeah, sure. You bet. You bet. And let me, there's something probably reflected in the minutes from DRC that I said that I need to back, I need to walk back when we were reviewing this. If you'll show the map of the, of the area. For anybody that's talking about the River Bottoms and specifically the River Bottoms project that we've been studying for the past couple of years, as we have reviewed the River Bottoms, I stated in DRC that I, I didn't like this project in part because it was in what I referred to as the River Bottoms area. But it, it actually is out of that area. So when we have been studying the River Bottoms, we specifically have been, lightsabers week, been west of this golf course line. And so this area is right here and it is outside of the, the area that we have targeted with that River Bottoms project. And I, I misstated that in the DRC a couple of months ago. The contract did contemplate development. I think that's very clear. And I pulled it up here as Mr. DeVano was talking. I think it's probably disingenuous to, to think however that what he's proposed today is what it contemplated. And I take exception maybe to the, to the terms and words that he used to describe how he's being treated today. I was here back then. I remember the discussions. I remember the, the company that he brought in. It included some of the same individuals today and they brought in plans. And they, they came in two thousand and six with, with images of what it would look like, what it would look like. And, and the expectation is that development would happen soon, if not immediately in two thousand and six.
For that property that we're discussing today?
Yeah, for this, no, for this subject property that we're talking about, yeah. And the contract says that D-Land anticipates the development of a number of residential units on parcel number three, which that's what this is in the contract's language, not to exceed fifty-four townhomes and ten single-family homes. However, the parties acknowledge that the property will need to be evaluated by the Planning Commission and the City Council of Spanish Fork and have the comprehensive general plan amended and a zone change granted prior to any residential development on parcel number three. City cannot and does not guarantee any specific density in the general plan, nor any specific zoning with respect to parcel number three. Accordingly, city does not guarantee that sixty-four units can be obtained on parcel number three. D-Land may immediately apply for a general plan amendment and zone change. And then it goes on to say, contemplate it would, that they would do that honor before October seventeen of two thousand and six. I don't, I, I think it's important then, if you go back to the image, they, they've started with their zone change request of, the original zone change request, I can't remember, I want to say it was some eighty homes. And the con, if you're gonna go back to the contract and use the language from the contract as any reason to do something here, then I think you start with the number of homes that was contemplated in the contract not to exceed fifty-four townhomes and ten single-family homes. So you can see those numbers are greater than that. And what was probably, what was reviewed, I don't believe this is the, I don't believe this is what we reviewed with the DRC, right, Dave?
Correct, yeah.
I think that's a different image. Yeah, it's probably that one. So they started with eighty total units, which was greater than sixty-four as well. Whichever project, this is what we reviewed as a DRC and probably what was reviewed by the Planning Commission. The other images that we've looked at have been developed since feedback from the Planning Commission. I appreciate the applicant listening to some of that feedback, but none of that has been reviewed, again, similar to the previous, previous application that we, you voted on just a few moments ago. So we, we haven't looked at anything here. We haven't studied what, what the layouts are. Mr. DeVano stated that, that we have a plan in front of us. Why the delays? It's been thirteen years. And I guess I would probably just state from the staff's perspective, the same questions back to Mr. DeVano. We have a plan and we had a plan in front of us. It's this one. There is no delay. We've gone through the process as he's asked. It's been thirteen years. Now why the sudden rush? Not that we're trying to slow him down, but as staff, we do our very best to review what is given to us. And every applicant has the right to have their development heard, reviewed and, and based on the merits. But as he's gone through both of these processes, processes tonight, I think it's difficult for us as staff and as for you as a council, to have one thing on the application that you're reviewing and then to have him in the middle of that process say, I don't want that, I want something else that hasn't been reviewed. I think that's difficult for you. And so I don't, I don't know what the, what the rush is, other than time is money. But if, if he's waited thirteen years to get to this point, let's get it right. Let's, let's review it. And I think what Mr. Anderson has asked for is important, some direction from you. The general plan, the general plan in this area maybe isn't all that instructive because it says public facilities, but the contract maybe is. And if you want to use that as a basis, we can certainly use that. But, but some direction from you on, on how you'd like to see this develop would be helpful for us. Thanks.
Thank you, Seth. I'll just finish my comments because I, I saw everyone taking lots of notes. I'm sure everyone has something. Just to address those who came and spoke to us in the public hearing, thank you. I know that's scary. And I know we all love our views. I've built three homes in Spanish Fork in my thirty-two years of marriage, so I'm part of the problem. I currently have three twenty-year-old kids looking for a house and it is difficult to find an affordable home. But it's also our responsibility as a, a city council to make the decision what's going to go there. And most likely, something's going to go there. Views are going to be, you know, adjusted, blocked, whatever. But we need to have a good plan in front of us. So I will, I will agree with Seth on that. It's a little frustrating to say, well, the, the images that were sent aren't even the ones that we were building. I don't know how you got those. And so there's no way for me to be able to approve something tonight when there's still so many unknowns and we need to come, we need, need to agree of how we want to move forward. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I got just a couple of comments. So along the lines of what Mayor said, in two thousand and five, my wife and I had bought our first home in Spanish Fork and it is right there. We bought one of the townhomes on Canyon Glen Loop and we lived there for five years. We raised our two youngest in the first, first five years of our marriage. And I remember when the trade took place because everybody was talking about, oh, something that's going to get built across the street. What's it gonna be? We were all nervous and anxious that it was gonna ruin our livelihood or our, you know, what we were used to. Everybody was a little anxious about it. You know, every Sunday, my wife and I, we'd take the kids, we'd go for a little walk down here along the trail. We'd pick up a couple of Brandon Gordon's golf balls along the way. We'd see the deer that would, that were there. And honestly, yeah, it's a beautiful, beautiful area. At the same time, this field, this area was always a concern for fires because it, it wasn't agriculture, it wasn't farming, it was, it was weeds. It grew weeds there. So not the prettiest piece of property in Spanish Fork, absolutely. And I, I personally believe that something should happen there. And I believe the property owner has the right to do something there. Is it this, you know, similar to what Councilmember Beck says, first time we're seeing this is tonight really. And so I, I think we need some more time in, in designing and really understanding what would be a beautiful piece of product on this, on this land.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm, I'm just gonna second because I agree with what Kevin and the rest and Stacy and what Dave Anderson said about this area because it is, it is the golf course. And as usually when you see a golf course and the homes along there, they're a higher-end home. And I would absolutely like to see this developed on a, a note you probably won't believe, but where we're building our brand-new sewer plant right now, which is down next to the freeway and, and about two thousand north, I used to water that land. It was Dan Evans', my wife's grandpa. And each time I watered it, then I'd walk up along the ditch and gather up Brandon's golf balls. And there was usually quite a few. It's, I never could believe they'd float clear down there, but they'd get in the irrigation system, they would. But I would absolutely want to see an improvement. I want to see this developed. I, even when you talk about the River Bottoms project, you guys know, and, and we share that. We know how special, what a treasure that is. And, and we're doing our best to try to do something. But I would like to see, I, I don't want to see a bunch of townhomes just stacked here because we can or because the plan says we can. But I want to see a top-end thing here. And I don't know if that, right now, if he does that, it's, it's sevens, which is less than across the street. If his contract says sixty-four, that pushes it more to an R-six, I think, they probably. So I'm not sure where we go. Townhomes can be very nice. I, I was looking through that book. They've got some nice products in there. And nowadays, there are some very nice townhomes that are being built. But maybe these need to be a little higher-end, a little bigger lots as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
You go.
Me go?
Yep.
All right. Couple of things. One, it's, you know, we've been talking about updates to the general plan for, since I've been here. This is what we're talking about. Like, we miss this. The fact that one of the, the reasons for denial is it doesn't match the general plan. Well, of course it doesn't. It's, the general plan is public facilities. We need to do a better job of stating what we want this to be in the general plan, the public facilities. We didn't give the applicant any direction on, on what to edit this. So I think it's incumbent on us to, to fix that, right? That said, I think we do need to put something in here. And I, and I would have to disagree that this is, this is a very contained piece of the, of the River Bottoms. I don't see this, this being a precedence to spill down the rest of the River Bottoms. So I think we're pretty well protected if something is developed in here. And I think that it is fair that, we have a contract that says it should be developed. So I think we need to honor that. Whether those numbers are correct or not, I'm not sure. Not a huge fan of townhomes here, honestly. If you're gonna propose them, you better bring more than this. This is good. I'm not denying that. But this doesn't exist anywhere in our community, right? This, this, this land. This is the last time to get it right and it needs to be done right. I like, I like this section. I would like to see less here. But I don't want to give you exact number because I, I came, I walked in today like, no way, there's gonna be, no way, heck, there would be townhomes here. Then Seth read the contract and now I'm a little bit. There's an expectation that was set. We signed the contract. You've honored your side of it.
Can we put the other one up, please?
And I, and I think, you know, I get it, but this is, this is what we, we put in front of us. And I know you've come a long way from that. And it is a better plan than this one. So I think you're going in the right direction. If you want townhomes in the future, bring your A-game on what they're gonna look like. And then we can have a better conversation.
Thank you. Councilman Gordon?
Mayor, I know we're, we're really big on doing things first, but the last thing I want to do first is have a baby in the council chambers. So I don't know how, I mean, that'd be great for you to go down in history, is your first, second months of, of being a mayor is having. But boy, you know, not to prolong Rachel anymore so I won't be long-winded with my thoughts, is what I'm saying. But I'm also in favor of denying this and sending it back, to have it be vetted by our DRC and Planning Commission, you know, with, with what. But I agree with Shane. I wrote down that if we've made promises and commitments, that we honor those. That's important. My uncle that left and I have had a conversation about this area. We call it the last of the Mohicans, if you will. And you can't make more land, we know that. And, and I want to make sure that it's addressed with the floodplain as well. As an insurance agent by day, I know what that does to homeowners. It can be thousands of dollars a year on your homeowner's insurance policy. And I get calls all the time, people had no idea that they had to buy it. And so if you'll vet that through the process, please. And then I, I too, I think it's important that if, if there's no option for a third-car garage along these, you know, it'd be tough to call them estate lots. And so the homes, I have a very dear friend and business owner here in town that's selling his two lots in Woodland Hills because he is destined to find a lot in Spanish Fork. And he says, why do I have to go to Salem and Woodland Hills? And his current plan is, he says, I've just decided, I want to live here. I want to raise my kids in Spanish Fork. I want them to go to these schools. Everything about it is wonderful. And he grew up here, so he understands all that. But, you know, we talked about this and he was giddy. And he was thinking, okay, but then, you know, how many lots will I have to buy to make, you know, this, this work for me? And I, I would love, I would love nothing more than to see, you know, just, just a little, you know, more density. My last, my last comment is, I love the public comment. I love that process. I've been doing this for eleven years and I appreciate people standing up in front of us. It is not our job, it's not our fiduciary responsibility to make any developer money. It's not- It's not, it's also, you know, not our role sometimes to stop development. I heard both of those arguments, right? I heard, I heard people get up and say, I'm not, we're not against development. And I appreciate that because someday, it's going to get out to our family farm out in Lake Shore. It might be past my lifetime, but when it gets out there and we might decide that we don't want to farm, or my kids don't want to farm anymore, you know, we want this process to be working with government to decide how, how maybe our farm develops as well. And so I'm, I'm understanding of that from the property rights perspective, as well as the landowners surrounding, making sure that we get the right product for this. And it sounds like we'll probably end up being back here for this process again sometime soon.
Mayor, one more comment?
Yeah.
So having lived here for five years and driving this street even today regularly and, and the comment even that was made tonight about the cars that are parked here, I would ask Mr. DeBino, just to do, do what you can tonight after that problem.
Yeah. I, I feel like there's opportunity for, for a win-win here with, I know the developer, the history of them, the, just their reputation in the state. Luxury certainly could be an option here. So I'm excited to see the product that comes, that, that is, is something that, I'm, I'm with Brandon a little bit signaling, geez, I'd sure love to see some third, or third-car garages that are on, that are on golf courses, the homes that, that are that, and maybe if it's even trading, what some, some density over here is. But the pictures that, of seeing, you know, patios and porches that, that front these trees here that are beautiful, and that river is so pretty, is something, I think we're all excited to see that product and DRC, as well as Planning Commission. But any other thoughts, questions before someone entertains a motion? Any questions for staff?
Mayor, can I, can I stay on that one?
Yeah, Vic, come on up. We'll, we'll give you, we'll give you, we'll give you one minute.
Yeah. I don't need, I don't need, the, I'm sorry if I offended anybody, but, you know, sometimes I would like to have more of an open door, so I would love to visit with Seth, so maybe we can, you know, get along, you know, and stuff. I found that with Dave and, and feel that we can cooperate and we can find happiness and we can find some tolerance for each other, you know, even people may have differences. But I'm all for that. I have 33 grandkids, I have nine great-grandkids, and I know what it is to be tolerant and loving and kind and happy, and I'm happy to meet with Seth. I would love to do that. I haven't met him in, since he's been here, taken over for Dave. So my last question is, is that when we bought the property from the city, boy, this thing that's working. So, yeah, so put...
Go right, right here at the edge, right on the diagonal, right there. And so when we bought the property from the city, I want everybody to understand that the 40 acres that we bought to do Spanish Trails, which ended up being about 48, is that was in a hundred-year floodplain, okay? Let's understand that. Okay? So to mitigate this is not a problem, and it only showed the water master as John, and knows the history of this, and the only place that we've had a water problem is right on that corner there, not where the homes are, but right on the corner.
Sure.
That's only where it's been. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
And I hope to get a meeting with Seth.
Thank you, Vic. We appreciate your time. Appreciate it. Okay, if there's any, not any more discussion on this item, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to deny the proposed zone change.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Gordon, seconded by Councilman Argyle to deny the proposed zone change based on the following findings. We won't list them out, but they're spelled there. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion?
Yeah, Mayor, that, that first finding?
Yeah. You'll strike that finding.
I guess it's technically correct, but it's hard to hold applicant to that.
So is number three.
Yeah, number three needs to be...
And number three is not, that's why I didn't include those findings.
If you amended your motion to delete those two?
Would you entertain an amendment? As said.
Amendment, amendment, amendment is discussed, is to remove, number one, that the proposal is not consistent with the general planned land use map designation, and number three, that the River Bottoms vision is under deliberation, is this, in our view, is outside the River Bottoms vision deliberation. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Is second still good?
Second still good with that? Councilman Argyle?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. This is a roll-call vote. We'll start on this end. Councilman Euler?
Aye.
Councilman Marshall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Beck?
Aye.
Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
And Councilman Argyle?
Aye.
That passes. Passes to deny that request. Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Vic.
Thank you, Vic.
Thanks, Vic.
Dave, you want to give us a second here before we go to...
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll...
Hey, Dave. We're going to do one more item, and then we're going to take a potty break. Is that all right? Okay.
Hey, Mayor, we've got, we've got a resident for one more item, G.
Judy?
Mm-hmm. And maybe we can make Dave wait.
Yes.
We can do Chris's.
Item G.
We'll do the public hearing, G.
Are we pausing?
I think we're just waiting for the noise to settle down.
I think, I don't know who's going to...
What are you doing? Who's going to chat with us? Something you walked through, yes? Oh, my gosh. Judy was my realtor. Yeah, and my...
She's everybody's realtor.
I'm here for Marty Warren. Her little acre piece of ground. And I don't know if you guys have already seen what they have.
Do you want Dave to brief us on it, and then you can speak to it?
You know what, we're changing in the rule.
This is, we've moved to item G, just so the public knows. Item G, ordinance 1422, Title 15, and septic tank regulations.
She doesn't want to stay here till 11, when Matt's return?
Well, you can allow septic tanks on lots of one acre.
Oh, no, no, I thought, I thought this was Judy.
It was Chris. Chris.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, that's okay, that's me.
This is you?
Yep.
Okay, sorry, Dave.
Chris wants all the details.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, we're on G.
We're on G.
So what this, this change proposes is some changes to Title 13 and 15, both which address septic tanks, and it kind of cleans them up a little bit to make sure that we only have items addressed in one place, but some in each. So basically, what these changes propose is that, first of all, you can't have a septic tank in a water source protection zone if you had a well or somewhere above, you know, have a septic tank above a well or that protection zone, that, of course, we would not want. It also says that a septic system cannot be installed closer than 25 feet from a property line. It says that, that, and this is kind of a change, we used to say you had to have five acres to have a septic tank, but there are some grandfathered, or would-be grandfathered lots that have been in place for a long time that are less than five acres, that are so far away from sewer, they would be unbuildable. And so it proposes that if a lot was either created before 2000, January 1st, 2000, and was one acre, then we would allow a septic tank on that lot. If it was created after 2000, it'd have to have five acres. So that's kind of the clarification there. And then this last thing is kind of interesting. We've, we've had this law that as soon as sewer is close to a lot, then you have to connect to it. The problem is, it's very expensive to connect to a sewer line, and so if a sewer, for some reason by a developer, has been run down a road, and, and then we tried to enforce this law and went to a resident and say, hey, you need to spend 15, 20, $25,000 to connect to this sewer main, it's, it's, it's a huge hardship. And so a lot of cities have this law, but they, they haven't enforced it because, I mean, how can you to force someone to, to spend that much money? And so we, we like to take the approach that, that once sewer is accessible, so within 300 feet of the, of the parcel, then, then a lien is just recorded. And so the next time, you know, a refinancing or a sale is in place, when money basically comes available, then that connection needs to be made. And we are leaving in the requirement that it needs to be connected, but this, this kind of actually is a reasonable path forward to enforcing the requirement, if that makes sense.
And you still have to go through the Health Department to get that approved, correct? That's the way this...
Yes.
Right?
Yes. So, so, you know, that's, that's an important aspect is, is we're not the only permitting body for septic tanks. They go through the Health, the County Health Department, and they give a permit as well. There is one other aspect of this law that I should point out, and, and that is the base rate. So this is copying what Provo did, and, and so I want to kind of explain philosophically why, but basically, once sewer is within 300 feet of a lot and is available to the lot, then we start charging a base rate on their, on their utility bill, even if they're not connected to it. Now, this is kind of an issue where people, a lot of people, when sewers ran throughout the blocks, a lot of people stepped up and they connected to the sewer mains in the road, but some have not. And so the issue is, whose response will help pay for that sewer line or half of the sewer line in the road that was put there to benefit their lot? And, and the idea being that it's very important that we don't charge their neighbors for that, but they actually take that on. And so it kind of also encourages connecting because you're paying in part for the cost of that sewer line, even if you don't connect to it. Now, there would be no usage costs, but that's another aspect of this, of this change. So...
When you say septic system 25 feet away from parcel line, that includes entire field drains and everything can't be, it's got to remain 25 feet.
Correct. The whole system has to be within 25, less than 25, more than 25 feet away from the lot.
And to my comment earlier, I love that there's the oversight, we're not, the Health Department's really the professionals in, in all of this. They go through that process as well, so that gives me comfort in knowing that that's still there, as far as the state regulations go.
Okay, this ordinance is a public hearing as well that, that we need to go into. Is there any other questions for Chris before we go into public hearing? If not, I'd entertain a motion, go to public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Gordon to go to public hearing for ordinance 1422. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in public hearing. Would anybody like to speak to this?
The buyers, they're the buyers out there. They're buying the ground. They just want to build a home on an acre lot. It's an old, existing lot. It's the only lot on the street that's not built up. It's down behind Fritz's, and see, the sewer line is supposed to go there with that big development, but who knows when it'll ever go down that road. They want to build their home now, and so the way Chris has proposed to change it, they could do a septic tank, build, and then if it does come down that road, they'll be in the same position as all their neighbors. Everybody down that road has a septic tank, so they, when it's within 300 feet, every one of them have to start paying a base rate. But you don't have to put it, hook to the sewer unless you sell or refinance, and then it flags your property to where you have to now hook to the sewer. So, and they said it's about $30,000 to do 300 feet of sewer. So this way, they can build their house, stay there, use, you know, and Marty Warren, you know, that worked for the city, it's her property, and so she bought it thinking it was always a building lot her whole life. So anyway, that's why we proposed the change, and Chris has made it so it's real workable, but it just protects all the neighbors. It protects anybody with that one acre that's an old grandfathered lot that doesn't have sewer by it. Now, if there were sewer close, there's no way they'd put in a septic tank. So...
Thank you, Judy.
But my question is, how long is it before it goes into effect? I mean, is this new lot, does it take months? Or is it A.D. to date? So there's no way they could apply for a septic tank?
Anybody else from the public that wants to speak to this? Let's do it for you.
I guess my only question.
Come on up.
Yep, come on, Trent.
Bill?
Name, rank, and serial number. Sorry.
My name's Trent Yurisk, and we're, we're looking about a lot, but my question is, he mentions the Utah County District for the Septic Systems, which I knew they regulate those on parcels larger than five acres. So how does this get handled in that department? Do we know? I mean, I know we're not in that division, but we're making a change in the city, but how does that affect the counties? Because they're going to be involved in me submitting for that permit to put that septic in.
Chris is going to answer your question.
So they, they regulate how it will be constructed, so how large, and, you know, your design and those type of things. We regulate where, where you can put them, as far as zoning-type regulations.
Thank you. Okay, I'd entertain a motion, go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Gordon, seconded by Councilman Argyle to go out of public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're out of public hearing. Any discussion or questions up here? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance 14-2, Title 15, Septic Tank Regulations. Potential amendments to Septic Tank Regulations found in city's code entitled 13 and 15.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle and seconded by Councilman Gordon. Any discussion on this motion? If not...
We're letting them do everything.
Oh, you're letting them do everything on this side? Heavy lifting.
We're eating their candy already, Judy.
We're eating their candy and letting them do it.
Any sewer conversation is always on that end.
There's a roll-call vote, and we're going to start on this side since you guys are the only ones making motions and stuff. So, yeah, Councilman Argyle?
Aye.
Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Beck?
Aye.
Councilman Marshall?
Aye.
Councilman Euler?
Aye.
All right. That passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
They have good neighbors. Orders are good people.
Run the, run the lines out front. It's not far away.
We have one complaint that doesn't have to be this round, but on the developments that we've been talking about all night, we do need some, somewhere. We do need something over there.
Point.
Thank you.
We have to be on the west side instead of by the golf course, but we need something. Yes, we do.
We do.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Judy.
I make a, can we take just a little break, Mayor? Do I need a motion to do that?
Councilman Gordon has made a motion to take a five-minute break and then resume. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilman Argyle, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five minutes.
Too bad you're in the middle.
Yeah.
Further questions for Seth about this fiscal year 2022 budget revision number two?
I think all the directors are here, or most of the directors are here if you want to go line by line. We can get them up here.
It's late, otherwise we really would have. No.
Let's talk about the fiber huts, fiber rings, and cable channels. I think I heard Brian. I think that's what I heard. Java.
Great job Seth, lots of work, lots of work by the directors. It's a big part of running a city and you guys do it well, so thanks for your transparency and work on the budget.
Motion to go into public hearing.
Second. Motion made and seconded to go into public hearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
If you two can slow down just a little bit down there.
Motion to go out of public hearing.
Still moved.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak to this?
That would be a second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Gordon, seconded by Councilman Argyle to go out of public hearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're out of public hearing.
It would be well, I think, for us to spend a moment talking about rates and specifically the PCA and some electric stuff. I'll invite Chris to come up. Jordan, do you have anything you want to touch on? No, thank you. All right, Chris, if you wouldn't mind. And if we see anybody come in from the public as after Chris is coming, it may be good to go back into public hearing. If we don't see anybody, then I wouldn't recommend maybe that we have to do that.
What if we get a podium text response while they're watching?
They'll give an automatic word after hours message.
Shane loves this slide.
I do. It's graph, so I love it automatically.
Okay, real quick, Pete just text me and said, "All of you talking to your mics when you're talking." Thanks Shane.
Sorry Pete.
Sorry Pete.
Sorry Pete.
Boy, that was a repeat.
In the electrical world of Spanish Fork, there's something called the PCA, the power, the price cost adjustment. This is something that our power supplier, UNPA, charges us. And basically, it's because the cost of power fluctuates so much that since they are a nonprofit organization, what they've done is they've said they'll charge us whatever the power costs and there will be a price cost adjuster that adjusts for how that fluctuates and then plus whatever their operating expenses are. Well, we also are a nonprofit organization and we want to protect ourselves against the fluctuating cost of power. And so for the last however long, probably 20 years almost, Spanish Fork Cities had a PCA that kind of follows the UNPA PCA and their effects on our power costs. And the blue line on this graph shows what that PCA has been. It fluctuates quite a bit. And because of that, it creates a difference in power costs that are felt heavily by large power users. And so I wanted to present one power user. February of '21 had a similar uses to what they had in November and their power costs were $56,000 difference with the same usage. And so what we would like to do is propose smoothing that out. We came up with a couple of options and the one is this red line, which is basically taking the previous 12 months and averaging their PCA and then applying that for the current month. We felt like this might be appropriate because power usage fluctuates quite a bit throughout the year as in the hot summer months when people are using their air conditioners versus other times. And so what we did is with that red line, what would this industry's power cost be? They would go from $129,000 to eventually, and this would, if you look at the red here, it would fluctuate gradually down or it would, yeah, fluctuate gradually down from the $143,000 to the $129,000 or how that would work. And then the other option that we had is that with the green line is if we took the average for the previous year and then we applied that PCA for the whole entire year, then the difference would be $149,000 versus $141,000. And so that would bring it even closer. But what we were worried about with doing the, what we're calling the average annual adjustment is that there would be quite a jump, you know, from June to July depending on the year. And so it's our recommendation that we do a 12-month smoothing. And so what we want to do is look at what that would have done as far as revenues go to the city, what it would cost the city in general. And so because of the PCA in the last 12 years, the city collected $11.9 million in that adjustment over what they would have if the PCA was zero, okay? If we went to a 12-month smoothing, that would have gone up to $12.4 million. And if we did the annual average, then it would have gone up to $13.3. Now, over 12 years spread out over the whole city, that's not very, that's pretty close. But we thought, well, what if we split the 12 years in half? What would the difference be? And it was $4.8 million versus $5.3 million versus $6.5 million. So very similar, no matter if you took half of this time or the full 12 months. So it'd be our recommendation that we follow the red line and kind of smooth it out. It still keeps us whole from the fluctuating cost of power so that you can budget and be fairly certain that you're going to recoup the costs that you're spending on power. But it makes it easier on the larger users to anticipate their bills month to month. Any questions about that?
So we aren't necessarily proposing tonight that we make this change. However, the nice thing is, as you can see on the graph here, on the far right, that red line shows you that whether we're using our rolling 12 months or the last little bit, the PCA has been negative, which in Spanish Fork means that the power rate is less. Most cities, if they have a PCA and the power bill is negative that they're getting from UNPA, they would just capture more. And we've been giving negative whenever we've had negative. So the customer's being taken care of well. This is a perfect time in the next month to three months, if you will. If we start to see our rates start to, if the rates go above one and we see that average move back towards zero, this is a perfect time for us to make this change because it will have no impact immediately on the user. There won't be an immediate shelf, one way or the other. We're hovering really close to zero. So we would recommend that we move this direction. And if you want some additional information, if you're comfortable going that direction, now that's fine. We can certainly begin to go this way. But if you want us to study anything more or get you anything more for this, about this, we can do that. Give us some of that feedback if you would.
How many customers are we talking about that would?
This would apply to all the customers of Spanish Fork.
12,500, yeah.
The ones that are feeling this are the really large users and we feel like there's a lot of more large users coming to the city and it's an appropriate time to kind of fix this so that they can better budget themselves going forward.
Create big segments of industrial capabilities, possibilities in the northwest quadrant of Spanish Fork. And this helps a lot of those people be able to plan on what that cost would be, right?
Yeah, and our PCA is really tough. As we've studied it more and more, the high summer months have to get billed out in October and it really causes customers to be treated differently than their July usage. The October usage isn't the same. So regardless, as we've studied the PCA and how it affects our customers, we feel like a change needs to be made to make it so it's more uniformly applied and certainly less erratic. This is maybe a good-looking angiogram or whatever, you know, the thing is that you go, EKG, not angiogram. Electrocardiogram, that's what I was looking for. Maybe it's a singing telegram, I don't know, but some kind of a gram. Some kind of, the EKG, but it really is not something you can budget around.
One thing that we struggle with is UNPA or the agency that we purchase our power from, their PCA is always three months delayed because it takes them that long to kind of calculate it out on what the correction should be. And so you might have, you know, the summer months PCA not get applied until
October.
You're into November, October, and the usages don't really match up. And so then it kind of swings ours even more so. Whereas if you did a 12-month, it would just even that out and it would cover every single month, so.
And you said we're not approving this tonight.
No, we just, this is the direction we're headed, but we wanted to kind of make sure you're comfortable with that before we brought you an ordinance next, probably next council meeting.
We'd like to do that, yeah. If you're comfortable with the concept.
Concerns with that direction?
No.
This would eliminate, remember a couple of months ago, we came to you with that massive spike PCA issue that we blended over two months. This would eliminate that.
We would never have to talk about PCA again.
Possibly. In the next council meeting as well, we'll want to talk about what we call the Dave Berg Study, which is a UNPA study that they commissioned on rates. And every year in July, we publish what our residential electric rates will change to in February. So tonight's budget actually doesn't change the rates. We said we would change the rates in July, but they went into effect or will go into effect? In five days, 10 days?
February.
So they'll go into effect in about 10 days, but we actually approved those in July. We'll bring you the Dave Berg Study and as a part of that, it is going to recommend that we adjust our, some of you will recall our solar five-year plan that we started now four years ago. And he's going to recommend a slight change to that after this year's change that we're going to do. And we will talk about that next week, Councilman Marshall, or next council meeting. One more go, one more go on power rates and PCAs, but then after that maybe none. Okay. Jordan, really, you don't want to get up and say anything about the budget?
I'm going to talk about the loan.
He will talk about the loans, yeah.
We'll hear from our finance director shortly, but is there any other questions for item D, the fiscal year 2022 budget revision number two?
I would say just one thing, Mayor, that if the public gets into the end of the numbers in the spreadsheet and has questions, say, "Reach out to us, reach out to Jordan, reach out to Seth." If you want to know, ask, right? We're willing to have the conversation about it.
If they would come to council meeting, we would have candy bars for them.
We would?
Absolutely. I mean, you would be the, no, at some point you want to share, right?
Well, I'm just saying, they come in thousands, millions of viewers at home, come down here.
I double dog dare them. Absolutely, we would love to have some feedback. So we'd have many candy bars.
Budgets, you know, this is a revision. The budget is opened multiple times throughout the year. So if there are concerns and there's things that come to attention, obviously, that's what we're discussing, discussing and amending throughout the year, so.
We've already had the public hearing?
We've had the public hearing.
I need to approve fiscal year budget 2022 budget revision number two.
Second.
Oh, Shane got it, sorry.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck and seconded by Councilman Marshall to approve the fiscal year 2022 budget revision number two. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Euler.
Aye.
And Councilman Argyle. That passes. Okay, item D is taken care of. We're going back up to item C, ordinance 1222, proposed amendments to title 15, amendments to clarify various development requirements, including street tree requirements for certain developments.
Mr. Mayor, thank you again. Happy to spend as much time on this.
Best written sentence I've ever seen in my life.
As you would like.
A proposal to amend development requirements, including requirements for developments. Keep going.
So we're going to talk about requirements.
For developments, for developments.
And then in a little bit, we'll talk about some other requirements and I'll finish up talking about some requirements. That being said. This is more simple than maybe it seems. We're really not proposing to change much by way of the standards that we have in the ordinance. There's one exception to that. This really is about clarifying what some of our processes are and what some of the words that we have in the code are intended to mean. And relative to probably the biggest change, it's about making our two newest zoning districts fit in better with zoning districts that have been around for longer than four or five years. So I'll start with that. Those two zones are the R4 and the R5 zone. And you'll see, for example, if you want to follow or probably don't really need to, that we're proposing, for example, to eliminate some things as permitted uses in those two zones. Twin homes duplexes, townhomes, and stacked flats. Now, that doesn't mean that we're trying to eliminate the prospect of somebody doing, for example, a stacked flat or condominium kind of project in the R4 zone. Simply put, if you look up above at language that we've added to the paragraph above that on page five, where it says, "Only individual lots for single-family homes will be approved as standard subdivisions. For a project to include twin homes duplexes and multifamily dwellings, a project must be approved as a master plan development." That exact language exists today in the code in our other zoning districts. So this came to be the way that it is when we developed our four and our five zones in kind of a vacuum. And we were really just focused on standards for those zones. We had many conversations with the Planning Commission City Council about, for example, how much density they were comfortable with in those zones and parking and other things related to how buildings in the zone should look and that sort of a thing. And I'll admit, we probably didn't spend the time back then, just a few years ago, to focus on making sure that it fit in with our processes as best as it could. Now, that being said, we've operated such that the projects that have been approved in the R4 and R5 zones have been approved as master plan developments and not just as like a standard project, which is what having them listed as a permitted use would suggest. And I fully recognize that this might not be making a ton of sense. But in terms of how we interact with people when they enter our office and they look for direction as to how to proceed with having plans prepared and that type of a thing and options that they have to follow a particular set of standards, this language really is important for us to provide a predictable path that they can follow. And in this case, that involves following the regulations that we have in the master plan development section of the code. Again, relative to substance and how we operate day to day, this actually is bringing things more into conformity with how we operate and making it such that if an engineer in their office in Sandy wanted to understand how to get a 300-unit apartment complex approved in Spanish Fork, with these changes, they could read this language and go to work and get it right. Whereas today, they could just as easily read this language and go to work and call us many times with questions because they would find as they go through the process that there are some things that aren't as expressly consistent as they should be. Now, I go a little bit overboard in describing that because we did get one inquiry from somebody that works for the Utah Board of Reliters, I believe, with some questions about that particular part of the changes, eliminating those, things as permitted uses. And I'm reading between the lines a little bit, but I think their concern is just from the optics of that appearing as though we're taking an opportunity away from a property owner, developer, applicant. It couldn't be farther from the case. Actually, I think this change helps clarify things to make it easier for them, excuse me, for somebody to get from start to finish with less question and, you know, any need to make revisions to plans and that kind of a thing.
You relayed that back to that individual?
Yes.
Cool, good.
So. That really is a significant part of the ordinance, making those two zones fit in better with their master plan development section of the code than what we had before. You'll see other language that really is just clarifying, referencing other sections of the code where we think it's appropriate and helpful for somebody that's trying to follow this and use it as a guide as they're preparing an application. I noted that in terms of standards, street trees, the idea that we are missing a component from our regulations that allows developments to be constructed without installing street trees, that's something that we've talked with the Planning Commission about for a number of years. And I think we still have a couple of obstacles that we have to get over to be ready to implement that citywide on all projects. But the Planning Commission's put their toe in the water and you followed suit by way of including some conditions that they've made with approvals to require street trees for master plan developments. And personally, I think that's a great step in the right direction. And this language here, again, it adds some predictability so that an applicant will understand on the front end what the expectation is and how to execute according to the rules and some of those types of things. And I think it's a very logical next step in terms of accomplishing that goal of just making our neighborhoods more attractive, more livable, better places for people to live. Those are the highlights. I'm more than happy to answer any questions you guys have or to do a deep dive on any of the Red Bull language that we have here.
Any questions for Dave on these various amendments? Edits that have been discussed with the DRC and the Planning Commission and obviously edited through those bodies and is now here for our review and approval.
Move to a public hearing?
Second. There you go. Thanks, Councilman Marshall. Motion made and seconded by Councilman Argyle to go into public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in public hearing. Anybody from the public? Motion to go out of public hearing?
Still moved.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Gordon to go out of public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're out of public hearing. Any discussion on this item up here?
I just want to commend the Planning Commission for taking a whack at it. Did a good job. It's a much better ordinance. The street tree policy is headed in the right direction. Great job. We asked them to do it, they did. Looks great. So thank you.
They're a good group.
Yes, they are.
The change, I think that change noted in discussions of, again, the water issues we've been talking about and everything that could change landscape in park strips, but at least we're getting trees in park strips, whatever that turns into, right? If it's not turf. Okay. Any other questions or comments? I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance 1222, proposed amendments to title 15, proposed amendments to clarify various development requirements, including street tree requirements for certain developments.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall, seconded by Councilman Euler. This is a roll call vote. Councilwoman Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
Councilman Euler.
Aye.
Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
That passes. Item C is done. We already did D. Now we're to item E, resolution 225, approving a loan from the Electric Fund to refinance a long. A loan. Okay, it says long in the side, but it says loan on the right side. Loan from the Electric Fund to refinance a loan to the General Government Capital Project Fund for Allabilities Park.
Do you have the resolution, Nick, that you can pull?
I blame Councilman Gordon for the spelling error.
So a couple of years ago, a council approved an inter-fund loan. And what an inter-fund loan is, loaning cash between funds. Sometimes we will move cash between funds and it's a gift that will not be repaid. In this instance, it was a loan that will be repaid. And what it was doing is taking $2.1 million from the Electric Fund and giving that to the general government to help build the Allabilities Park. And it will be paid back, has to be paid back within 10 years. State law requires inter-fund loans to be paid back within 10 years. The first three years have no payments. And as we were discussing another inter-fund loan that we'll talk about here in a minute, we realized that rates were lower now than they were then. The rate at the time was 2.5% for a 10-year treasury note. So we thought, well, let's refinance it and save some money for the general government. It means a little bit less interest, or yeah, interest revenue for the Electric Fund. But 1.75% is still much higher than what Chris makes on his cash earnings in that fund. He's around a half a percent there, so 1.75% is still much higher. Yeah. Does it show the payment schedule, Nick?
Not in the resolution.
Oh, it doesn't?
But board docs does.
Okay, if you want to bring up the payment schedule. So it's about, if you look at the far right column, does this have a pointer on it? Okay. This column right here is the payment amount. This number before the refinance was $357,000, so it ends up saving about $90,000 in interest over the life of the loan. Yeah. So any questions about that?
Why do we defer for four years, three years?
That is a good question. I believe it's just the ability for, it's going to be paid back, this loan will be, with recreation impact fees. And I think the recreation impact fees had some other projects at that time, so they'd said, "We can better handle that payment in a few years."
Thanks, Jordan. Any other questions for Jordan on this? I'd entertain a motion to go to public hearing.
It's all moved. Second.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Euler to go into public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in public hearing. Anybody from the public like to speak to this? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing. Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Argyle to go out of public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That is back up here. This is what I referred to earlier of being a power city that owns the Electric Fund and helps our residents out ourselves. Everybody likes the Allabilities Park and this is part of how it was built.
I was talking to a finance director earlier today that was lamenting that they did not own the power in their city, you know? It is a nice thing to have, control both the rate and control of the dividend that it produces.
I think it'd be safe to say that the whole park built by generous donation, loan from the Electric Fund, sale of city property, added up to being able to basically build that park, right?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, any other discussion on this? If not, I'd entertain a motion to save ourselves some interest.
I move to approve resolution 225, approving a loan from the Electric Fund to refinance along with the General Government Capital Project Fund for an Allabilities Park.
Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilwoman Beck. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Euler.
Aye.
Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
That passes. Okay, item?
Same thing with this one?
F.
So this is establishing a new inter-fund loan. And what's happening here is the Water Fund is loaning up to $2.1 million. We're hoping it won't be quite that amount. We're thinking it'll be more around $1.8 million towards the construction of repairing the golf course irrigation system or redoing that system. The reason we're having the Water Fund loan this money is the Water Fund has a special interest in conserving water, which the golf course uses a lot of. So Chris has informed me that this new irrigation system will save a lot of water, which means the Water Fund then purchases less water rights. Okay, I nailed it. Thank you. And one of the things that we really wanting to do is to have the golf course pay this back over time from their own revenue. And we feel that can be accomplished. One thing that Seth had to run, he had some family stuff to take care of. But there's a spreadsheet, I don't know if you have access to it, Nick, Seth acted like he did. And he wanted to just discuss. just discuss the possibility of reducing the loan amount and having the general fund front more of this project. The golf course is part of the general fund, so as the golf course has excess earnings, revenue, excess revenue over expenses, you know, that falls into the general fund and we'll repay the general fund. So what Seth has put in here is the idea of, we're thinking it'll be around $1.8 million that the water loan, the water fund will need a loan towards this project. So with the $500,000 general fund advance, this payment amount would be 152,000 a year. And if you'll delete that number, Nick?
This one?
Yes. And then hit enter, then it pops up to 206,000. So it would just reduce the amount. I don't know if you, as a council, have any preference over a 206,000 payment amount or 150,000, whether or not we have the general fund front that. I'm comfortable either way. And I do feel like the golf course could cover about that 200,000 each year from their own earnings.
So what we're saying here is that there is an additional 500,000 in the general fund today?
There is. That we could, that's true.
In here.
Yes. And we'd still be in a good place with the general fund. Yeah. So let me give you a total, this is the total projected cost of the project. The water fund is granting 685,000 towards the project, again, because of the water conservation that will happen. In the last two years, the golf course has earned excess of expenses, 875,000. This year, they're on track to earn at least 200,000. That's why we feel that they can make that 200,000 payment. Golf courses in general have been doing very well since the pandemic hit. People are wanting to get out on the course and we're seeing that in the numbers. Yeah. So this is how we're funding that 3.6 million.
Seth's preference to have that 500,000 advanced one time?
Yeah. He told me before he left, you know, he's kind of on the fence either way. So what we did is we wrote this resolution in a way that we can loan up to 2.1 million. So it doesn't have to be decided now. We can look at how much it ends up costing, how much we're going to need to transfer. And we'll make that transfer at the end of the fiscal year as the project finishes up. And we can make a decision then. We can bring this back to you and say, okay, now that we know what it's going to cost, whether or not it's, the loan needs to be 1.8 million or 1.6 million, we can decide how much we want to.
It could be 500, it could be 700.
Uh...
It could be 200.
Oh, you're saying that with, how much the general fund advances there? That's true. Yeah. The general fund's doing well right now.
I would, my preference would be to set up the loan with a payment that we're comfortable with. And if we have to pay, if we want to pay it off, we're, let's do it. It's not like we're going to a bank to...
Right, yeah.
...finance this. We can do that in this meeting. So if we have the money, let's pay it off. I hate to tie up money.
I think that's kind of what Seth's feelings were.
If you might need it.
Yeah, we might, if we might need it.
So you're not in favor of the 500,000?
Not right now. I mean, I...
We could do that at the beginning of next fiscal year or something, you're saying?
Yep. If we have it at the beginning of the next fiscal year, let's do it. If we want to use it for something else in the next six months, we have it.
It does provide a little more flexibility.
Yeah.
We're going to go to a public hearing. I'd like, but we can, we can hear from you if you're after public. No, just you.
Just a couple of comments. Obviously, that 200,000 there for profit is a conservative number as well. I think, and when Seth talked to me about this earlier and threw this idea out, our concern is golf is dependent on the elements, right? And so I guess his only thought was, let's make sure we're protecting against having a bad year, because we do have those. We're hoping for a really wet spring, not, the golf course isn't. We are overall for water purposes. So that really was the purpose for trying to do that, was just front some of that money and then pay it back.
So his point is that the payment is a little bit higher than you would want?
Yeah. Well, and we're perfectly fine. I think he's trying to guard against, you know, let's put something in there we're comfortable with, just like you said. We can ob, we can obviously exceed that. We can pay more of that money back as our profit margin's higher. So I think he was just guarding against not being able to make that payment if we had a...
Because you had the five minutes on there.
Yeah. This resolution doesn't lock us into that because we're going up to an amount?
We have time.
Yeah. Perfect.
So I'd recommend that the resolution just be approved as it is and then we can determine what that loan amount is, that later date as we get closer to the completion of the project.
All right. Thanks, Jordan.
We should go into a public hearing.
Motion made by Councilman Gordon?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argyle to go into a public hearing on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in public hearing. Anybody from the public? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Gordon, seconded by Councilman Argyle to go out of public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are out of public hearing. Any discussion on this? I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve Resolution 22-06, approving a loan from the water fund to the general government capital project golf course irrigation system project fund.
All in one breath. Motion made by Councilman Gordon, seconded by Councilman Argyle. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman Argyle?
Aye.
Councilman Euler?
Aye.
Councilman Marshall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Beck?
Aye.
That passes. We've done G, so we're skipping to H. Ordinance 1522, transportation element of the general plan revision. Chris Thompson.
Okay, this is a quick one. Can you ramp the...
Oh, God.
Small, this one item, one item. As you know, we are really focused on relieving the congestion on Main Street. We've contracted with some traffic engineering firms to, to give us some ideas on how this can be done. One of them is to prioritize this route up here to Third East, which is a wide road. We did a study showing that it is possible to, to make that connection from the Riverbonds Road. Once that's, that study was done, we put it in the master plan studies. And so it can be referenced, but this actually is the master plan drawing that shows you can do that. It also shows connection over here to Volunteer Drive, which can divert traffic over to future interchange at Center Street as well as, this was already in place before. So the main changes here, if you look at what the master plan was before, is, is it adds this connection up here as well as these two connections to Main Street. Any questions about that?
Does this box, Chris, mean that this road tees into the green road?
Yes.
So this movement is just continuous?
Yeah. So the idea being when, when South Lane connects across over to Arrowhead Trail, then what we want is, we want Riverbonds Road to just connect here and then this would just tee in.
Okay.
Here. And this would, would stay a local type road.
Okay. Oriented to where we are. Any questions? Councilman Marshall loves it. Okay. Let's see if the public loves it. I'd entertain a motion to go into a public hearing.
Still moved.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Gordon to go into a public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in public hearing. Anybody from the public? I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Gordon to go out of public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're out of public hearing. Any further discussion of this action, this ordinance?
I move to approve ordinance 15-22, transportation element of the general plan revision.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Marshall. I'll just add an important point that Chris pointed out. We're trying to relieve congestion on Main Street and here's part of the action plans we're doing.
It doesn't look like it, right? It's hard to tell from this, but that is...
That's your intent.
Yep.
Plans in place.
Will that be a switchback going up the hill or will that be a straight up?
It would be a switchback. So, so basically, traffic coming from this area, which eventually would be Salem, so this road goes down to Salem, would be diverted to Arrowhead Trail, to Volunteer Drive, or to 30th instead of Main Street. So that's philosophically...
Kind of a little drawing, but it's a big deal.
Yeah, it kind of, it kind of is.
And there's some acquisition land that needs to happen.
Yes. And, and some development that's occurring particularly, or being proposed particularly in this area and in this area that, that this will affect.
Perfect. Great. Thanks, Chris. We have a motion and a second, and then I interrupted. Any more discussion on this? If not, this is a roll call vote to Councilwoman Beck?
Aye.
Councilman Marshall?
Aye.
Councilman Euler?
Aye.
Councilman Argyle?
Aye.
Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
That is approved. Takes us to I. Ordinance 1622, construction standards revision.
Okay. The only one that's probably interesting to everyone except for Shane. Shane probably likes them all.
All of them.
But, but that being said, the other ones are kind of minor, just changing specs, relatively minor specs. Is this one? This is a, a water and pressurized irrigation meter box. Now, why a box looks round, it's just what they call it. But we, we have been using this for several years now and have had really good success. It's very efficient. You can have two meters in one big area. It's very easy to work on. When you change out a meter or, or work on this, you don't have to dig up the whole entire planter strip in front of the house. There's a lot of reasons why we like this. But the major reason we like this is we've noticed something with a lot of new homes. These meters get placed in an area where someone eventually needs a driveway. And so I, normally a meter is placed long before house plans are even contemplated. And they get put in a spot and then someone comes up with a three-car garage house with a driveway half the length of their lot and this meter ends up in, inside of the driveway. Well, the meter cans that we had before were not traffic rated. And so the homeowner had to spend thousands of dollars tearing out a, a meter and putting in a traffic rated meter like this so that they didn't have trip hazards and they didn't damage our, our meter in the process of having it in a driveway. Well, in a lot of subdivisions, especially the ones with the narrow lots, a lot of subdivisions, this was up to half of the residents were having to do this. And it was such a huge cost to them. And it created a lot of angst in our future residents. And, and so we felt bad about this. And so we've been experimenting this with some developers who have been doing it voluntarily. It's been working great. We've required this on all multifamily residents that had, like, twin homes where, where you had to have a pressurized and a water meter together. And then also multifamily where we had actually put two water meters in the one box because obviously the pressurized irrigation, it was a big meter somewhere else. But it's worked out really well. And so we would like to propose this as the standard and just require it all along. It does add between $400 and $500 cost to, to building this if you are the developer. But in half of the lots, it saves a lot of money to the future resident. And in the long-term maintenance for the city, I, I actually went and spent a day working with the meter crew. And we were changing out a meter in those little, the old boxes that we had before this. And in order to get in there and work on it, we ended up digging up the whole entire planter, pulling the box out and then working on the meter and then putting it back in. It's really kind of unfortunate. And that, that's not a problem in these because you have such a big area you can work in. And it, and it basically makes it so the homeowner can do whatever they want in that planter and with their driveways or add a driveway later or however they want to do it. And, and we're fine meter-wise. There's one other benefit, and that is these meter lids are hard to take off. A lot of times, we have residents pulling their meter lid off and monkeying around with the valves, turning them on or off, or damaging them. And, and so what, what we have done is, is with this meter lid, it's, it's much more difficult to do that. And, and the trip hazards, Irma says that that's one of the major liabilities that cities have, is the trip hazards from meter lids being pulled off and then left off and people stepping into them. So that's less of an issue too. We can talk about joint restraints and some of the other standards if you'd like.
That sounds good. Any questions for, for Chris before we go into a public hearing? I'd entertain a motion to go to a public hearing.
Still moved.
Motion made by Councilman Euler?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argyle to go into a public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in public hearing. I'd entertain a motion. Anybody? Anybody?
Still moved.
Entertained a motion to go out of public hearing. Councilman Euler, motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argyle to go out of public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're out of public hearing. I'd entertain a motion for this construction standards revision.
I move to approve the construction standard revision.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall, seconded by Councilman Euler. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Argyle?
Aye.
Councilman Euler?
Aye.
Councilman Marshall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Beck?
Aye.
Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
That passes. We're on to number eight, A of new business, 601 South Real Estate Purchase Contract. Tyler Jacobson.
All right. Last council meeting, we shared with the public that we have a piece of property that we're looking to surplus on a, a larger parcel of property that's located at approximately 601 South Main Street. This diagram gives somewhat of a, this is, this is pretty close to the area that the, the property that we're selling. It's about a half acre of a, of a almost 10-acre parcel. This appraised for about 640,000. We got an offer, sorry, 640,000 an acre. So on the half acre, the appraised value would be 320,000. And we got an offer for 300,000 in cash plus 22, 22 and a half thousand in improvements to the property that would benefit the city. So pretty close, just, just over what the appraisal was is what the offer was for. As part of the contract that you see on the agenda tonight, it does require that the city stub the utilities to the property, which is actually standard for what you would expect when you, when you purchase a property is that you would tie into the city's main line. There are a couple of utilities that we still need to get to that property. So we just wanted to make sure that that was, that was clear. We would need, the, the business that is proposed, that has given us a proposal is, it's, their company name is RWO, but it's actually Reams that's here in town. And so they are a business and they would be required to have 24 parking stalls. The current footprint for their building plus the stalls that they have is not adequate. So we would have to have some type of a cross-access agreement for this property that would allow them to use the parking lot that the city's planning to, to put in on that larger parcel. The city, as part of the contract, the city would design the full parking lot and then the buyer would complete phase one of, and we don't have this information back yet from the engineer, but when it does come back, the percentage of the property that Reams would be using, they will be required to reimburse the city for that portion of the, of the engineering. And, and then they'll also be required to complete phase one of the parking lot improvements that will be, that we plan to put in. So paving the lot and, and then the city would reimburse them for their cost, for the portion that would benefit the city. Does that make sense? Kind of a long-winded way to say it, but... Another thing that we, we, we would do as the city is there's a power line. It doesn't interfere with the building that Reams plans to put on the property. It doesn't interfere with the building that Reams plans to put on the property, but it's just outside of that. We were planning to do that anyway as part of the parking lot improvements. This would just speed that timeline up. Settlement deadline, if you look at the contract and add the the number of days, due diligence and 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 other timelines, we would close within eighty days from today if this is approved and likely likely sooner than that. Any questions?
Did we get any other offers?
This is the only offer we got.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Tyler?
I move to approve six oh one South Real Estate Purchase Contract.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Gordon, seconded by Councilman Argyle for the six oh one South Real Estate Purchase Contract. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Euler.
Aye.
Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Beck.
Aye.
That passes, is approved. Thanks, Tyler, for that information and the good work. All right, our favorite guy, Ryan Perry, to talk to us about item B, Resolution twenty-two nine, Spanish Fork Community Network, twenty-twenty-two cable TV rates.
Mayor Council, thanks for giving me just a minute. I know it's been a painfully long meeting, and I promise to be brief. Before we get started, each of you mentioned in your council comments thanking the staff and the department heads for the work put into that work session. Thank you. That means a lot. But I also want to thank you guys because it takes a lot on your part to go through all of that fire hose worth of information in two days. So thanks for hanging in there with us and making sense and asking the right questions and making the right decisions. Thank you. Okay, let's talk about our least favorite topic of the year, cable TV rate increases. They just they happen. We can't do anything about it. But I will go relative relatively quickly through through these slides. Cable TV prices go up every year. We can't fix that. We don't control that. Unfortunately, we are we are beholden to what they charge us. The retransmission rate, this is the rate that we pay for the free over-the-air cable TV channels, just keeps skyrocketing. So if you want to complain, if there's complaints, call up ABC, call up NBC. They're they're some of our worst offenders when it comes to this. The streaming services that launched a few years ago for really great competitive rates, you can see what's happened to their pricing as these contract prices catch up with them. There's just not a lot we can do about it. One thing that we can do, though, is we don't stoop to the level of trying to hide part of our fees in other line items. Some of our some of our competition and other companies, they sneak in a lot of charges when you get your final bill that give you a fair amount of sticker shock beyond what somebody's expecting to pay for a cable TV tier. We don't do that, and we pride ourselves in not doing that. Even though cable TV rates go up, we want those to be transparent. We want people to know what they're going to pay. That's the line item. If it if it works for them, great. If it doesn't, we're sad to see them go from our cable TV service, but we're happy to help them find other options as well. So with that said, here's our rate changes from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two. Basic cable goes up two forty-nine to thirty-five sixty-two. Expanded basic is up seven thirty-five to one oh eight ninety-six. Super digital is up seven sixty-eight to one twenty thirty-eight. Our full package, that puts us at eight sixty-eight, up eight sixty-eight for total of one fifty-six thirty-nine, putting our triple play at one fifty ninety-two. And the premium channel that went up was the HBO Cinemax that went up one dollar. So those are our rates for two thousand twenty-two. And just one last item to note here, those rates will go into effect April first. They won't show up on the bills until May first because we bill in arrears for the prior month's service. For those customers that are looking for alternatives, and we don't blame you at all, there are a lot of options out there. And one of the good things that you can check out is mybundle.tv. So if you hit mybundle.tv, they'll walk you through some of the options. They'll ask you questions about your household, what kind of channels you like, what your priority channels are, what you've got to have, and they'll help you find streaming alternatives to cable TV packages. And it used to be that those streaming alternatives were going to be almost assuredly cheaper than your cable TV package, but that's not necessarily the the way it's going these days. So I will mention that we are looking at some possible revisions to that cable TV service. Even though we can't affect those rates an awful lot, we can do some things to make that service more usable, more modern, more functional for our for our customers. So we are looking into that. That's all I've got. Any questions?
Completely pass through.
Completely pass through.
The part that we collect, the portion of the bill that is sent to my house or another's house, Spanish Fork gets exactly the same amount.
Yep.
Today as they would April.
Yep. These rates are the exact amount that our channel rates go up. Yeah. And, you know, if if we want to be completely transparent and honest, that margin on cable TV is so slim that if that was our only service, we would be so far in the red, we'd we'd be bankrupt. There's there's we subsidize the cable TV from the internet side. So it's just it's not a profit center for us.
The O and M part of it we subsidize. The O and M, the.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're not subsidizing the subscription rights.
No, 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 just the O and M.
Brian, since the meeting tonight, are customers notified at all of the rate increases?
Yes, we send out, we we the FCC requires that we notify customers thirty days in advance of these rate changes. So pending your approval of these rate changes tonight, we will have probably by the end of the week our annual postcards that go out to all of our cable TV customers advising them of these rate changes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You have to have cable TV. It's how you watch.
How you watch this?
It's how you watch Studio Chatter.
I know. It's worth a hundred and forty-seven dollars.
You can watch YouTube. You know what's going on.
I got to put another plug in there because Studio Chatter is great, but it is an SF seventeen program. You can watch that on our website from anywhere for free.
Ooh, thank you for saving me a hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Fair enough. Fair enough. There he is.
Can we just watch ourselves all night?
That's good. Oh.
Here we go.
There you are, me.
How's the word that? Okay, we need a motion to pass this resolution of cable TV rate increases.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-two oh nine, Spanish Fork Community Network, SFCN twenty-twenty-two cable TV rates.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle and seconded by Councilman Euler. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Euler.
Aye.
Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
That passes. We're on to item C of new business.
Brian, if we said no, would ABC listen?
You know, they would probably get a little bit of a chuckle out of it, but we're not big enough fish to really hurt them, I'm afraid.
Okay.
And then we would start subsidizing. Twenty-two zero seven, disaster mitigation plan adoption.
This is a three hundred and seventy-eight page document, which I'll try to go through. I'll try to go through as quickly as I can. Basically, what what it does is it says, here's all the disasters that could happen in our area. Here's some things that we can do to mitigate them so that when they come, they don't cause as much damage. The theory behind this is if we do it, maybe we can get some grants for the federal government to help pay for some of that mitigation. Or at least it tells us some mitigations that we can do even without a grant. We did get a federal grant once to do some premitigation disaster relief, and that was the trail from Main Street going east. And so I I'm told that didn't have anything to do with this. It was more of an earmark that our senator got us. But it's a good concept. I don't believe this has produced any money for Utah County yet, but they're optimistic that if we keep approving it, someday we'll get some. So we need all the cities to approve the resolution, right? I think there's a resolution.
Yep.
And then they send that in, the county adopts it, and then it makes it so that we are able to get some applied for funding, I guess.
Great. Thank you, Chris. If there's no questions for Chris or discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two zero seven, disaster mitigation plan adoption resolution.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Gordon. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
Councilman Euler.
Aye.
Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Beck.
Aye.
That's approved. Item D, Resolution twenty-two eight, interlocal agreement between Spanish Fork RDA and Spanish Fork City for the Corona CRA.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This item is connected to two items, the new business items for the RDA agenda. So I'm going to go ahead and just kind of describe everything now, if that's okay with you, rather than go through it twice or take part of it now and part of it then. And I guess I start. I know we do, but I can describe them together now. We, like a lot of communities all over the place, have a problem. Vacant Shaco buildings, vacant Kmart buildings, vacant Best Buy buildings. All of these buildings that used to house retailers that are either no longer operating or that have significantly scaled back their presence in the marketplace. And they're a challenge for communities to deal with all over the place. Because of their design, oftentimes they're not optimal for new retailers to operate from. They're not operable to, maybe I should say they're not well-designed at least to demise for different businesses to to maybe occupy different parts of and that sort of a thing. And it's really, really expensive to change them. To take buildings like the Kmart building here, which is thirty-plus years old, and to bring it up to current standards, whether it's seismic standards or just any type of building code requirements that are in place today, as well as to make improvements to the site, you know, whether it's to replace an aging parking lot or storm drain system or any of those types of things that frankly, after thirty years, they've kind of run their lifespan, and it's time for really expensive updates. We have witnessed this firsthand as we've talked with different retailers now for several years, back to before the Kmart and Spanish Fork went out of business, about what could happen with that property. And there have been numerous conversations with the property owner about everything from the immediate possibilities of businesses that could operate from there. We've seen a few of those, seasonal businesses and that type of thing. We certainly had conversations about longer-term tenants of the site. But nobody's signed on. The building's obviously been vacant for a number of years. And I absolutely believe that it's the expense of doing something with that existing site that has kept it the way that it is now. I absolutely believe, based on what I've heard from both retailers and retail brokers, that that particular location is ideal. It might be the best unutilized site in Utah County today, literally. But yet, it's so expensive to take a building like that and to put it back into service that because of that, we have a problem. The property owner believes the building has value, and it does. But again, it's really expensive to take that building and make it usable. So that's the problem. And what we're talking about now, this is the solution. The city using the capacity that you have as the city council to approve an agreement, and then later on, when we're in the RDA meeting, acting as the redevelopment agency, approving agreements that would allow for a portion of new revenue that would be generated should a retailer operate from that property to help bridge the gap that exists between what it would cost to make that property usable and what somebody can afford to pay for the property. That indeed is the solution. Now, the nuts and bolts of that, with these agreements, which let me mention this now, so don't forget it later, we are asking tonight that you, as the council, approve the interlocal agreement. And then later on, we'll ask you as the redevelopment agency to approve both the interlocal agreement and a participation agreement. We ask that you do that, subject to some final edits being made. Some details that haven't been included in these agreements that I think are are not at all substantive to the nature of what you'll be committing to in those two capacities. But we would recommend that the approvals be contingent upon those edits being made before the mayor signs them. The interlocal agreement is an agreement between the city council and the redevelopment agency. Kind of weird, maybe, that you're agreeing with yourselves. Happens, I guess, when you wear two hats sometimes, and it's not uncommon for that to operate when oftentimes city councils are the redevelopment agency boards. The participation agreement then would involve a third party, and I'll touch on a couple of things relative to that. The nuts and bolts of this, I mentioned a second ago, really has to do with using new revenue. Right now, that property is generating zero in sales tax. It's generating a minimal amount in utilities, if anything. I haven't checked to see what that amount is. And it's generating a relatively low amount of property tax because of the current valuation of the property. The effectiveness really of these agreements is contingent upon somebody making a significant capital investment in the site, which will raise the property tax value. And with that new property tax, so the property tax that exceeds what's currently being collected of that amount, fifty percent would be returned to the participant after they've paid their full tax bill for a period of ten years. So that's one component of the revenue that would be generated to help bridge this gap. A second component has to do with utility bills, and the situation there is essentially the same that fifty percent of what the participant pays in utility bills for the next ten years would likewise be returned to them. And then the by far most significant component has to do with sales tax. It's like I mentioned a moment ago, this property hasn't generated sales tax of any real consequence for a number of years. Seventy percent of the sales tax generated there, or some amount that's in that ballpark, I'll explain why it's an amount that's in that ballpark in just a second, would be returned to the participant each year over a ten-year period of time as the biggest component of getting to a point where there's some meaningful revenue generated that can help put that property back into a usable condition.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed three million dollars.
Okay.
So if that happens in year eight, it's over.
Precisely. Yep. Now, I'd mentioned those, you know, seventy percent of sales tax, fifty percent of both the property tax and utility payments. Those are not precise numbers because of the new revenue that's generated. Ten percent of that has to be set aside for affordable housing. We're doing that currently with the other part of the Corona CRA, the agreement that we have with Woodbury. And that simply is according to state law. So there's that factor that factors in. I actually might not have stated that perfectly, Vaughn, or you'll have to probably correct me if they were here right now. But I just say that to generally describe that there is another component of this as well. Those really are the nuts and bolts for the council to act. Like I said, it's the interlocal agreement that we'd ask that you approve, subject to final edits being made as necessary prior to the mayor signing it. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you have. I want to downplay this a little bit, but it's hard to help everybody understand just exactly how long this has been in the works, and I really think we're getting close to a finish line, which is kind of exciting. Does internet, is that included in the utilities? It could be, I think. If they were, if we were a provider of that? Certainly. Okay. We don't charge much for it, so fifty percent of that's not gonna be a lot. But I think absolutely that would qualify per the understandings that we have. Any utility we provide, okay. Yep. So, for example, not natural gas, because we don't provide that.
Right.
So Dave, the building's been sitting there for however long, collecting zero sales tax.
Right.
We're going to invest the sales tax that we would get from a new tenant back into the building to help them get there, basically. But thirty percent of that goes back to the city to use for whatever purposes they want.
Correct. So we see an uptick in revenue immediately.
Sure.
And then we see a much bigger uptick in revenue in two thousand and thirty-five.
Yeah, sooner hopefully.
Possibly, yep. And if somebody operating out of this location has the same experience as other retailers, it likely would be less than ten years.
Increasing from zero percent to thirty percent.
I like the math.
Yeah, something like that.
Apply it on the city at this point, more revenue.
It's a pretty big deal to just have this on our agenda. I think Dave, they've said that well. It's an understatement to say how long this has been worked on and to get it to an agenda. It's a big deal. Any other discussion with this item or questions for Dave? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve Resolution twenty-two zero eight, subject to the final revisions being made prior to the mayor signing the document.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Euler and seconded by Councilwoman Beck for Resolution twenty-two zero eight, Interlocal Agreement Between Spanish Fork City RDA and Spanish Fork City for the Corona CRA with the revisions made prior to the mayor signing the document. This is a roll call vote. Councilwoman Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Euler.
Aye.
Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
That passes, is approved. Who want to do E and F before we adjourn to the RDA? Okay, I'm getting the nod that we're gonna do E and F and then adjourn to RDA afterwards. Item E, Ordinance thirteen twenty-two, Amending seven twenty-eight one-ten Volunteer Firefighter Retirement Board.
All right, the fire retirement board met the end of December, and one of the members of that board is, has been the public safety director. That position is being dissolved. Chief Adams was the public safety director, which means he was only, oh, he was over not only police and animal control and emergency preparedness, but also fire and ambulance. With the hire of a fire, full-time fire chief, the full-time fire chief will be over fire and ambulance. So it makes sense for the fire chief to be on that board now instead of a public safety director that does not exist.
Perfect. Thank you, Jordan. Any questions for Jordan on this? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve Ordinance thirteen twenty-two, Amending seven twenty-eight one-ten Volunteer Firefighter Retirement Board.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Argyle. This is not a roll call vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Welcome to the new chief when he's hired to the fireman, fireman volunteer firefighter retirement board. Item F, Dave Anderson.
Again, thank you. Maple Park Estates and Maple Mountain Estates are two subdivisions that are located between Maple Mountain High School and the railroad tracks, which also is the Mapleton-Spanish Fork boundary or will be in the future. So developments east of Maple Mountain High School, kind of picture that area. The railroad tracks to the east of those projects, the tracks indeed border those projects back several years ago. As we were in the process of seeing those projects start to develop, we were reviewing plans for them and that type of a thing. We realized that if there was ever a need for a second set of railroad tracks to be included in that corridor, that additional land would be needed for that. Does that make sense? Just as if, you know, a road was going to be expanded or something like that. And at the time, we were working with Arrive Homes, again, on those projects, and I kind of want to take a minute to thank Arrive Homes. They don't walk on water, like every development and homebuilding company. We have our run-ins with them and that type of a thing. But here's what they've done for Spanish Fork City. Back then, they, when we brought this issue to their attention, they stopped, they revised plans that for one of the developments were complete, and the other development, they were well towards having complete, and accommodated land for a future rail expansion. They deeded that to the city now several years ago and basically said, you can pay us later. And that might not seem like a big deal, but I've had firsthand experience with other development companies that absolutely would not have done that. They wouldn't have stopped designing their projects without us reimbursing them for lost fees, lost time, different things like that. And they certainly wouldn't have given us land before we were ready to pay for it or any of those types of things. So I really, really do appreciate, as I see it frankly on behalf of the city, how Arrive has been patient with us because their patience has led us approach our regional transportation planning folks, mountain land, to where we were able to get an existing project modified, a project that studies what we're talking about, this rail relocation opportunity, to have right-of-way acquisition included as an appropriate way to use some of the funding. So now, we're at the point where those funds are available from MAG to pay for this land that we took ownership of several years ago, making it so that there's really not an out-of-pocket expense for Spanish Fork City, which I think is appropriate. And this is certainly a regional transportation project, so I don't think that there's anything out of order at all. But I don't think things could have fallen into place any better, and again, I think Arrive deserves a lot of credit for that. The way things would work going forward is that if you approve this reimbursement agreement, then we cut a check for Arrive relatively soon, and then we give an invoice to Mountain Land, and they reimburse us likewise relatively soon. So it's late, sorry for all that background, but again, I really did want to take a quick second to thank Arrive publicly and happy to answer any questions.
Did we have an agreement with them? Or was it just a little walkover?
I don't even think we literally shook hands. It was just an understanding.
It's definitely a good thing. There could be homes there, and this two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars could be.
Could cost immensely more, yeah.
Yeah.
And incidentally, the dollar values that we're talking about here as well, these are based on appraisals that were done, backdated as best as an appraiser could to the date that we took ownership of the property, which that doesn't happen. So again, credit, in my opinion, to Arrive.
It's late on a Tuesday night, but this is a pretty big deal for the stuff we're working on. This session that could change, change our community for a whole lot better, and regionally too, obviously. So good work, everybody, on this. This is a long time coming to this agenda, too. All right, any discussion or questions for Dave? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve a ready reimbursement agreement for Maple Mountain Estates and Maple Park Estates railroad expansion.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle and seconded by Councilman Euler. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Euler.
Aye.
Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Beck.
Aye.
That passes.
I move we adjourn to RDA.
Second.
Motion to adjourn to RDA, seconded by Councilwoman Beck. All in favor, oh, we have to roll call vote. Councilwoman Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Euler.
Aye.
Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
We're in RDA.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Motion made to approve the consent items and seconded by Councilman Argyle. Roll call vote there, too? It does say, all right, Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
Councilman Euler.
Aye.
Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Beck.
Aye.
Minutes are approved of RDA. RDA public hearing. We're going to a public hearing?
Motion to go into public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Gordon, seconded by Councilman Argyle to go in public hearing for the RDA. Roll call vote, Councilman Euler.
Aye.
Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
We're in public hearing. Anybody from the public that would like to speak to the RDA? If not, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilwoman Beck to go out of public hearing. Councilwoman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
Councilman Euler.
Aye.
Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Beck.
Aye.
We are out of public hearing. RDA new business.
Motion.
To approve the budget.
Oh, we do have a budget revision in the RDA, yeah, fiscal year twenty-two.
So I'll just highlight the one change to the RDA budget. We had budgeted one million-dollar transfer from the general fund. We're increasing that to one-point-one million dollars. The Woodbury RDA that Dave referenced is generating more sales tax than we anticipated, so we need to increase the amount of sales tax that we're transferring from the general fund to the RDA fund for that reason. So moving it from one million to one-point-one million.
People are shopping.
What's that?
People are shopping.
Yes. Yep.
For generating sales tax, not just Amber Men and all.
And that, just for your awareness, that amount will be significantly less next year because there's four quarters worth of payments in this fiscal year. Next fiscal year, it ends and there'll only be one quarter worth of payments.
Awesome. Thank you, Jordan.
Yep.
Okay, fiscal year budget revision going from one million to one-point-one. I would entertain a motion to accept that.
I move to accept.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Gordon, seconded by Councilman Argyle. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
Councilman Euler.
Aye.
Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Beck.
Aye.
Is approved. The budget for RDA is approved.
Do we, did we need to give the public an opportunity to comment on that public?
Was that a public hearing? Yep.
I think what happened is the order just got switched.
You opened and closed the public hearing before you presented.
Yeah. So I think we've gone through the motions.
What would you like me to do?
Public, public, anyone?
It's, all boxes have been checked. I think I'll stand behind my decision.
You're making Tara nervous over there.
Thank you, Chief. If you want, you can do it one more time, just so.
Okay, let's, I will entertain a motion to go into public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget revision in RDA.
Taze or taze or taze.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, motion made by Euler, seconded by Councilman Argyle. All in, this is a roll call vote. To go into public hearing. Councilman Euler.
Aye.
Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
We're in public hearing for the budget revision. Anybody from the public? Don't stand up, Dale. You can stand up. I would entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilwoman Beck to go out of public hearing. Roll call vote, Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
No.
Councilwoman Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Euler.
Aye.
That passes, four to one. We are back here, out of public hearing. And now we need, do we need another motion to approve that? Okay, budget, we've already approved.
Wait, wait. The RDA has its own minutes, so I need somebody to tell me something about the new business item. Because everything you told me in city council will not be in these minutes.
Gotcha.
You're actually having a budget for now, I thought.
We're out. We're to new business.
Now we're in number twelve, new business. Come speak to us about the new business in the RDA.
I don't have anything to add from what we talked about before.
Right, but.
I have to have minutes.
Just state it.
Yeah, just say we have one.
Exactly. So two agreements that would allow the city to use tax increment to help fund a redevelopment project in Spanish Fork.
Perfect. That's item A. Any questions for Dave? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve RDA Resolution oh-one dash twenty-two, Interlocal Agreement Between Spanish Fork City RDA and Spanish Fork City for the Corona CRA.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Gordon. This is a roll call vote. Councilwoman Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Euler.
Aye.
Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
That passes. Now on to item B, RDA Resolution two-two-two, Participation Agreement Between Spanish Fork City RDA and Participant for the Corona CRA.
Motion to approve RDA Resolution oh-two dash twenty-two, Participation Agreement Between Spanish Fork City RDA and Participant for the Corona CRA.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Gordon. For this resolution, this is a roll call vote. Councilwoman Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Euler.
Aye.
Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
That passes.
Motion to reconvene back to city council.
Second.
Motion made to reconvene back to city council by Councilman Gordon, seconded by Councilman Argyle. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Euler.
Aye.
Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Beck.
Aye.
We're back in city council.
Motion to go into closed session for land transaction and reasonably imminent litigation.
Motion made by Councilman Gordon.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argyle to convene to closed session. This is a roll call vote. Councilwoman Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
Councilman Euler.
Aye.
Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
We are adjourned into closed session.
That was, it was. We'll watch it again in slow-mo later.